Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Here.
Ms. Peng. Ms. White. Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Mr. Ronak Patel. Mr. Eriko.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Opening statement?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notices of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place they were posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star-Ledger.
Okay, as I said, we're gonna go to the closed session first. So in accordance with the NJSA Section 10 dot 4 hyphen 12, the Edison Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following. One, confidential personnel and board matters. Two, pending litigation. Three, student matters. Four, legal matters, contracts. Can I have a motion to go to a privy session?
Motion to go to closed session.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so as I said, we'll come back in about half an hour or 45 minutes. Thank you very much. Apologize that, you know, the meeting took a bit longer than I anticipated and, you know, thank you all for waiting. So can I have a motion to reconvene to public session?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So just a couple of things that we need to go through this. We're gonna have a public hearing about a lease purchase of James Madison Intermediate School at the next Tuesday's meeting, so we're gonna have a hearing on that. Okay, so, you know, welcome to participate in that meeting. And the next meeting, we also have a teacher recognition, and we recognize those outstanding teachers and staff that has been working very hard for this school year. Hope that you guys can join as well to, you know, applaud them for what they have done. Okay? So talked already, anything else you wanted to say?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Shi. Yeah, on the, I echo your sentiments in relationship to the honoring the Teachers of the Year, which are coming up on Tuesday, as well as our support staff. We are in the conclusion of Teacher Appreciation Week, and this week, we are actually, there is a resolution on the agenda honoring and acknowledging Special Education Week. Also on this agenda too, under the administrative section for the Board, on Tuesday's meeting, you'll be approving an affirmative actions team, which will be creating a needs assessment related to the development of a comprehensive equity plan. Also on this agenda is the ever-popular summer hours, which we're actually doing in May as opposed to June. I know Ms. Campione is probably very excited about that, but summer hours are now published and up for approval for the Board of Education. In relationship to curriculum, the only agenda item currently are our field trips. Also underneath of the administrative section is our special education services for our out-of-district placements. We have policy-first readings, which actually concludes the audit that was done in 2023. We have just a couple of public service announcements, if you don't mind, Mr. Shi. Many of you may have gotten a email today in relationship to subscription busing. The deadline is June 17th, so if you are interested in acquiring a bus for the upcoming school year and you meet the eligibility requirements, please make sure that you fill out that information that has been provided to you. All the details are listed in the correspondence that went out today. We had a really great meeting, our first meeting with the Education Foundation last week. It was, was it last week? I'm losing track of time, Mr. Yeah, okay. Yeah, it was absolutely fantastic. We had a really great showing. It was extremely exciting to see so many individuals that were coming out to support our schools in a very different way. So we're really excited about that. We're gonna have a June meeting, a second information meeting, just to kind of inform the community in relationship to what the foundation is, what it's going to support, and opportunities for participation. And our goal and target is to launch that foundation in September, and that will be a completely separate body, obviously, from the Board of Education. It will support Board of Education goals, but it will run independently. It will have its own Board of Directors, trustees, Chair and Vice Chair. And last but not least, we are, we're in the final stretch, right? We're in the home stretch currently right now. We've got a few weeks left to school. We are wrapping up NJSLA testing. Just a special shout-out to all of our secondary students who are probably in the midst, I know that my high school son is, of taking exams right now. Hopefully, he is home studying, which I'm relatively confident that he is not. But hopefully, he is, or pretending to, and for those students taking exams and AP tests. So that actually concludes my report, Mr. Shi.
Okay, thank you very much. So I am gonna change the order of what we're gonna do slightly today because we have two items that we need to vote on first. One is personnel, the other is finance. It's about the MOA with one of our unions, and the personnel item is about a payroll supervisor. So now I'm gonna open up public comments for those two items only. So if you're gonna talk about anything else, you stay, we'll allow you to speak there. So if anyone has any comments for the personnel and the finance, please go there. Sinon, can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion to close.
Second.
Okay. All right, so can I have a?
Motion to, motion to adopt the finance?
Motion, yes, motion to adopt. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Personnel and finance.
Personnel and finance, sorry. Personal and finance.
Thank you very much. I was like, wait a second, we did this one?
I thought we were doing one at a time.
Personnel, finance, you wanna do a separate, we'll do a separate.
No, no, you didn't say that before.
Yeah, like two at once, consolidation. We got a motion by Mr. Eriko, I have a second by?
Vishal.
Thank you so much. All right. Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
No.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
No on both.
Ms. White.
Um, okay, is there anything that I have to recuse myself from?
No.
Okay, so I'm a yes.
No, on the, on the finance, yes.
On the, on the finance, you do finance?
Yes, we do, and I have already that, I already have it noted what you're?
Do you have it noted? Thank you so much.
You know, I got you, come on. It's not all just great hair. Okay.
Good for you.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, okay, so we have a new payroll supervisor.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome to the team. You have the podium, you have ought to say a couple of words, if you prefer, it's your call.
I'm gonna say thank you.
No, no, you don't have to, you don't have to.
Mr. Shi. We appreciate you being here.
Mr. Shi. Sauce or gravy?
Sauce.
Okay, so, you know, if you don't want to stay, you can feel free to leave, I will open up the room for some other people. Okay, yes.
What?
Now, you, I have to tell you to go. Your title and, yep.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Nicole Cirillo. I am the proud principal of Woodbrook Elementary School, but tonight I am here as the Vice President of the Edison Principals and Supervisors Association. So, thank you. Hey! So on behalf of the Edison Principals and Supervisors Association, I want to extend our sincere thanks to the Board of Education for approving our contract. We truly appreciate the time, the collaboration, and the thoughtful consideration that went into the process. We would also like to thank Dr. Al Dorelli, Dr. Huss, and Mr. Toth for the time, the energy, and the commitment in helping us reach this agreement. As the leaders who work each day to uphold the district's mission and vision and strategic plan while ensuring the well-being of our staff, supporting our families, and nurturing the education of all our beautiful children, your beautiful children, we're grateful to your recognition of our contributions. So thank you so much for your partnership and your continued support of our work in our beautiful district. Thank you so much.
I just have to make a quick comment on that. I'd like to thank my colleagues, Mr. Eriko, Mrs. Penn, and Ronak Patel for working with me to, you know, on the negotiation, so we're able to, you know, quickly got to the endpoint, and a lot of time has been spent by these guys besides whatever the other committees. So I really appreciate all your effort. It's, you know, not unnoticed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're open for the public comments on policy. I think most of you guys are here for that. So who wants to lead? Open. You wanna go? Okay, go ahead. Yes, name and address. Yeah, I just wanted to say today, we have a lot of people, so I am good to, you know, do the six-minute rule. Before, we were a little bit relaxed on the six minutes, so let's try to finish with six minutes. And, you know, at the end of six minutes, I will have to stop you because we have a lot of people, and I want to give everybody the opportunity to speak and don't have to go home at 2 o'clock in the morning. So I'm gonna be a little bit strict today on a six-minute rule. Okay? So with that said, go ahead and name my.
Right, thank you. My name is Kim Lindley. I'm a resident of Manalbun, a former special education teacher, a mom, and a taxpayer. I am here tonight to speak for those who are unable. As a former teacher, I could not imagine being in the position where many teachers are today. One becomes a teacher because they love children. This career may be chosen because it's not only a job, it's their passion. Teachers play a vital role in that of students. Elementary students' favorite people are usually mom, dad, and their teacher. What a teacher says and how a teacher interacts with students has long-lasting impact. Teachers not only impact a child's academics, but they also can influence a child's emotions. A key component of a child's educational needs being met is the relationship the teacher has with their parents. Policy 5756 is destructive to teacher-parent relationship. Teachers are not required to tell parents if their child is or has changed their gender identity. A separate file is kept, sent down to the state, is recognized in school as a new gender identity. The school social worker can act in place of the parent, and the parent is in favor of the new gender identity. Parents are kept in the dark of this alternate life, alternate life of their child in school. A child as young as five is able to determine when to tell mom or dad. A doctor's note is not required for a child to change their identity. How does this make any sense? Policy 5756 is a school board policy that is divisive to the family unit. This policy creates division within the school community. The clear lines of communication are broken with policy 5756. It has been proven that when a teacher and parent work together, the students benefit. Students who have parental involvement tend to have less behavioral problems, less absenteeism, more involvement in school activities. When teachers have parental involvement, they're benefited as well. These benefits of clear communication lines with the parents are less homework problems, less absenteeism, more precious time teaching than addressing behavioral issues. As a former teacher, it'd be hard to choose between my profession and my faith. Parents are given as a gift from God. How can a teacher, how as a teacher can you navigate such a fine line? When school board policies conflict with your morals as a teacher, what do you do? Now a teacher is distracted with this policy and spends his or her full attention on sparring their students to learn. The harassment, bullying, intimidation policies are already in place. Also, teachers are court-mandated reporters that must report when a child appears to be in danger. Please rescind policy 5756. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Who's next? Okay, go ahead. Name my address, please.
Yes. My name is Lydia, and I'm from Edison. I'm a constituent in Edison. Good evening, and I want to thank you all for hearing our messages today. I work?
Can you make the microphone?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no problem. No, I can hear you, it's a people on the.
Okay, okay.
So the other lady behind, if you want to sit, we have seats here. Okay.
So I work as a mental health clinician in a job that often helps families in crisis. It is important for clients to have trust in their counselor, and especially in a school setting. According to a study by the Trevor Project done in 2024, surveying LGBT-plus people between the ages of 13 and 24, 26% of transgender and non-binary students have seriously considered attempting suicide. These crises often come about when they feel trapped in situations where they cannot be who they are safely. If a student cannot trust the school faculty and administration to call them by the name they would like to use without their parents being notified, how can they be expected to trust their teachers or counselors when they are experiencing a life-threatening emergency? The parents who wish to abolish a policy 5756 may have concerns and good intentions, but not allowing LGBT-plus students to have privacy as they learn to understand themselves can put children's lives at risk. We may not know what environment a child comes home to, but we must create a space where they feel safe for the hours that they are in school. I urge you not to abolish policy 5756 to help these children make it to adulthood. To the transgender and non-binary individuals in this room, and actually, this comment is also to the youth. If the adults in power fail to protect you today, know that you are loved, you are strong, and it gets better. Trans and non-binary people have always existed and will always exist. We have survived so much worse, and we will continue to survive, and it is important that you do so too. You have allies all over this country. If anything I've talked about today rings true for you, or if you're experiencing a mental health crisis, please call the Trevor Project or text chat them on their website if you don't have a phone or a safe space to speak verbally. Their phone number is 866-488-7386. If you're experiencing a crisis in which you or someone you know is in immediate danger, please call 911. And to the parents today who are struggling with this topic, you are not alone. I understand you may be scared for your child and how the world may treat them. The most important thing that you can do is show unconditional love and acceptance to your child to help them through these difficult times. Even if you disagree with some of the things I've said today, we all have a common goal of keeping children in our community alive and well. I encourage you to reach out to PFLAG, which provides support to family and friends of the LGBT-plus community. They also have resources that discuss how allyship is congruent with religion, if this is something you're struggling with or would like to learn more about. Thank you all for your time and for your listening ear. Let's all work together to keep these children safe.
Thank you for your comment. Yeah, the lady, yeah, go ahead. No, you, you, yeah.
Sorry, got to hold my phone to remember what I want to say.
Take your time. Just pull the microphone a little bit closer.
Of course, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. Yes. My name is Danielle Bruno-Eloquin, and I am a resident of Colonial, New Jersey, also in Milltown County. I'm, I'm opposed to the abolishment of policy 5756 because as a teacher myself in a district not too far away from here, teachers are mandated reporters. We should not, we should be protecting and not putting children in harm's way. Keeping children safe requires acknowledging that kids need to feel safe with us. And if we're violating their privacy, we cannot allow a child to be safe with us. As a teacher, I've had to make calls to CPS and DCCMP before, and that's because of the relationship I have worked to build with my students to protect them. Kids need to figure themselves out on their own terms. Unfortunately, that means sometimes we have to relinquish a little bit of control that we might want to have over our children. Even I don't, can't control a kid to sit down still when I want them to. I'm a teacher, I know how it works. But I have to trust that my child, that the child that I am entrusted to care for can come and talk to me about what's going on, and they feel confident and protected in my care. Also, it makes no sense for us to be abolishing this measure, this policy, when it's already on the books that LGBTQ history is meant to be taught to sixth, sixth grade to high school-age students. We can't be teaching this history while also taking away its future. So as an educator, I implore you to think of students first. And unfortunately, it is very scary to admit that we don't always know what our children are thinking. We're not in their brains, we're not in their heads. Trust me, I wish I knew sometimes what my students were thinking. But at the end of the day, we have to trust that they feel confident and safe with us to come to us, to talk to us. And if they, and, if I read the policy correctly, it doesn't, it require, it doesn't require you to, it says you may not address it with your, with the parent. It's up to teacher discretion. Teachers often have to make choices that they are stressed to make about whether a parent is a safe individual to talk to about even behavioral issues, because we don't want to put these children in harm's way. We want to protect these kids because the school's safety is the number-one priority of education today. More even just making sure our kids know their mathematics and their, and their ELA. We need to make sure that these kids feel safe and confident when they come to school to show a big smile and to feel that they are welcomed in their, in this space. I know it's scary. I know, and we're in very unprecedented times right now, but I implore you to think, how would you feel if the chance to be able to talk to somebody on your own terms is taken from you? So please, do not abolish rule, policy 5756. Thank you.
Thank you. You're, you're next. Ma'am?
Beth Talke, 15 Midwood Avenue, Edison, New Jersey. I know you guys are making a big vote tonight on this policy, and I understand that all of you Board members are volunteers, but you have a lot of people here that want to share their experiences, their thoughts on this, and public is watching, and it would be appropriate if everybody was paying attention to what these people came here to say tonight. It's a little disheartening sitting in this audience and watching people. I know you have lives, and this is a volunteer job, but right now, you should be giving all of these people who gave their time to come here tonight to voice their opinions the respect to listen to them and look at them and listen to what they have to say, whether, whatever your opinion is on this policy. Right now, you should be acting as Board members. This is a big policy for people, and their opinions on it matter, and they should be given the respect that they should be looked at and not just doing other work instead of listening to what these people have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. You're next. You're next, okay? You're, you're after that.
Hello, I'm Dr. Laura Patron. I am from Milltown, New Jersey. I am also a straight cisgender woman and ally, devout ally. I am also blessed to have a daughter who feels comfortable coming to me to tell me that she is a member of the LGBTQ community, and I know that that is not common. I have two purposes for my presence. I want to ask the rationale for the abolishment of the policy 5756, and I want to appeal to the Board to reconsider this action. And as such, I'd like to clarify a few reasons that I feel are important to consider in retaining it. Focusing on the student well-being and safety, the mental health. This policy, studies show that transgender youth, as has been said, face significantly higher rates of depression, anxiety, and suicidal ideation. And I personally know at least three people who are transgender and have dealt with this. This is not just a statistic, it's a reality. This policy, policies like 5756 aim to prevent discrimination and harassment, ensuring that all students feel safe at school. Creating a safe and affirming school environment is crucial to their emotional well-being. When a student feels safe and supported, they are more likely to thrive academically. In regard to anti-discrimination laws, there are laws, the New Jersey's Law Against Discrimination protects students from discrimination based on gender identity. Schools have a legal obligation to provide equal educational opportunities for all students regardless of their gender identity. As far as ethical responsibilities, educators have a responsible, a responsibility to create a safe and inclusive environment for all students. And addressing this common concern about parental rights. Parental rights, parental involvement is very important, but it is also crucial to protect students from potential harm. There are many homes that do not support this, and I know of people who have been discharged from their homes for their gender identity. Okay? In some cases, forcing students to disclose their gender identity to unsupportive parents, as I just said, can have devastating consequences. It is important to note that policy 5756 does not stop all parent notification. It is there to protect children in situations where they are not safe to be outed. It's a very different thing than saying you can't or you must not. So in closing, policy 5756 is designed to protect transgender and gender non-conforming students in New Jersey schools. For the love of all that is good, why would you want to take away this and send a message to the community that it is okay to bully, harass, and otherwise keep all students safe at school? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead. Please move the microphone up a little bit. Thank you.
Yep. Hi, my name is Cal Reinhard. I am a resident of North Brunswick, and I'm here today as a labor advocate, as a transgender man and a parent of no children but uncle to many. New Jersey state law and the labor movement know that acceptance and inclusion of transgender individuals is essential to their happiness, well-being, and ability to function in the workplace. to their happiness, well-being, and ability to function in the workplace. I can say that my transition was made so much easier by the open and warm acceptance of my coworkers who I was able to come up out to on my terms when I was ready. The same is true for transgender kids in school. They should be worrying about their homework, not being distracted by being misgendered or excluded doing to be uh due to being transgender or worrying or whether uh about whether or not their family uh will accept them or even keep them in the home um because a teacher they trusted was forced to inform their parents before, before they were ready. Gender identity is not dangerous. It is not drugs. It is a normal facet of being a human being. It is self-exploration. It is expression. It is self-love. And that it is something that kids deserve to explore in a safe and accepting environment. The board has voted on this issue several times. They have been informed by teachers, therapists, psychiatrists, students themselves and their parents, and the facts of science itself. That and that this policy is necessary to protect them. I hope that you will all vote to put transgender kids first. And that to protect their liberty, to explore and express their gender identity in a safe place, to keep policy five seven five six. And that this is the last year that it's brought to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Silva. I'm from North Edison. Um, sorry, I'm getting emotional. I have three kids in Edison schools. One of which is trans and every day she goes out, I worry about her well-being. She is just, I love her so much. I love all of my children, but I especially worry about her. And I worry about how she'll be perceived in uh public and all that stuff. Not, not because I'm ashamed of her, but because of her safety. She is doing amazing at JP. She is awesome. She's lovely. She's sweet. She's involved in so many clubs. And I feel like making this, um changing this and making it, I don't know how many of you have children in the school system, but know that some of them are not telling you that they are LGBTQ because they come to my house and they tell me that they're afraid to tell their parents. So making it available to have them in a safe environment. I don't want my kid worrying about all these things that she doesn't have to. I want her to focus on her studies. She's an A student. She is amazing. But making it so that she can't be called by the name she wants, that she can't um use a non- um a non-gender specific bathroom, um that she has to go in the boys. I'm afraid she's gonna get her butt kicked. I'm afraid that things are gonna happen. I'm afraid that she's gonna be because we're telling the kids, hey, this doesn't matter. It doesn't count. We're taking it off. That's, that's not okay. I, I love my child and like any parent, I fight for what is their um their ability to be themselves anywhere. And I gotta say, when, when she told me this, I was like, whoa, that blew my mind. Raised very strict, very strict Christian and all this stuff. But nothing is more important than my child, my children, and the love I have for them. So, I want to make sure that it's not just the cis child, the um regular person that's, you know, heteronormative, I guess you call it, um that's getting the ability to be called the name they want. I remember in school, a kid being, his name was like Peter and he wanted to be called Jacob. Nobody questioned that. So why would you question my child being, wanting to be called the name that she feels is hers and that we have given, um allowed her to choose? Also, um putting it and saying that, uh you know, the school needs to be able to tell the parents that. That's putting an onus on the school for your relationship with your child. You need to work through it and talk to your child. You need to go after and pursue them a relationship with them, not put the onus on the school. We are parents. We love our children. Please. Um, as someone who lives here, has lived here for at least a decade, has three children, one who's gone through it, two that are still there. Please, just continue to keep my child happy and focusing in school on what she needs to do and not worrying about things that she doesn't need to. We have plenty of time to get into the real world where people are super against her. Um, in some studies, they say, um, I was reading, some um studies, four times more likely to commit suicide. Some studies go up to nineteen times more likely to commit suicide. Nineteen! I don't know about you, but I don't care if it's a, it's a she, he, it, them, they, whatever. That is my child. I will love them and support them in any way. And to keep just a simple thing like safety in school and their ability to be themselves in school is such a simple thing that takes nothing. It takes nothing from us. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I heard, I saw someone on, over on, along this wall raised their hand before. Okay, so yes, okay.
Hello, my name is Grayson. Um, I'm from Attachen.
It's a little higher.
There we go. Hi. Thank you all for taking the time to hear uh what all of these lovely people have to say. Um, and keeping open ears to things that might be new to some people in this room. I uh, I've lived a lot of places in my life, especially as a young kid. And I am so proud that New Jersey is one of the safest places to be trans. The fact that I get to, to live here and be here and contribute to my community is such a gift. When you are a child and you trust an adult, that is something very precious. Because you get a lot of people who look at you and don't think that your, your brain's fully formed. That means you're not quite a person yet. But every child is an individual and every child is a fully formed person every day. To be able to trust an adult and share something with them that is so near and dear to your heart or is maybe just something you're figuring out. Maybe you just want to see how it feels. If you can't talk to your parent about that, but you can talk to a teacher, that is something beautiful. And that is something that should be treasured and protected. Like this wonderful mother over here mentioned. The school is not responsible for the relationship that you have with your children. The school is responsible for making them feel safe and loved and like they are in an environment in which they can learn and thrive. There is nothing like feeling betrayed by someone you have put that precious trust in. So in order, in order to mandate that a teacher break that trust with a child, they're at an age where that hits them foundationally much deeper than, than it would for you or me who have had more experience in being hurt and deceived. This policy allows teachers to protect that trust and allows students to have a dialogue with an adult so that they may be brave enough to have that conversation with their parents and be pleasantly surprised when it's all okay. So, thank you again for taking the time to listen. And um as, as Cal here pointed out, sincerely hope that the children of uh in Edison Public Schools do not have to worry again that this privacy may be taken from them. They have a world to grow up in and I'm grateful that we get to show them that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other? Any, anybody else? Oh, oh, okay. Yo, alright, so you're next. No, uh, in the back?
Hi, my name is Lain Tiel. I live in the one-two-nine Oakwood Avenue, Edison. Uh, I'm like twenty-five years resident here and I have two kids in the public, uh in Edison Public School. I came here to support a bo- abolish, you know, the fifty-seven fifty-six. Um, I just remember when my daughter, when she was six years old, she came to me. She has an older brother. She looked up at her brother for everything. Her brother does karate. She went to. She doesn't want to dance. Hey, and one day she came to me, said, "Mom, I want to be a boy." I said, "Why?" I said, "I just want to be a boy. Boy is so cool." So I told her, "Sorry, Aprilia, you cannot be a boy because God made you a girl. We cannot change that." And besides, I already have a boy. I don't want to have one another boy. Okay, say, she said, "Okay." Then all the past ten years, she grew up like a beautiful girl. She u- used to don't want to wear dress. Now she, she like to dress, have a long hair. She enjoy it. My point is here. Um, I totally respect, you know, LGBTQ community or transgender, what they're thinking. But as parents, you need to ask why they want to be a transgender. Why they want to be another identity? Why? Right? Nobody, why? They just say they want to be. But do you ask why? I read articles says, you know, usually the born with uh, um, you know, um, L- LGBTQ, whatever, gay or lesbian, usually happen at three, four years old. After that, most is influenced by the social influence, you know. It's not the, the born with it. Right? So, I noticed that this past ten years, you can see from the social media, from the TV drama series, they're promoting this. Our young kids, they confused. Do they really want to be a transgender? Cut their healthy part? To become something they cannot be really be? So ask yourself, right? You cut your healthy part. You can become another opposite sex? For real? Nobody tell them truth. The youngest kid, I read the report, to go through the surgery, only ten or twelve. Why did, why this country allow that happen? Right? They're so young. And you give them that youth blocker to block them normally grow. That's insane. No other country does this. Right? It's really harm for the young kids. And one day, they regret it. Are they gonna change back? No way. I read a report, research says ninety-six percent, the transgender, they regret. Right? So, as a parent, you have to think about this. And can parents keep in the dark? I know the school, we give them the best education. But why don't you leave? Give the parents a right to tell them. Isn't the parent supposed to be the first person to talk to your kids? If they have emotional um confusion or change? Parents, some parents might be very extreme. Parents need education too, right? They need co- keep, you know, open-minded and talk to their kids. But always the kid's supposed to be the first? You know, parents are supposed to be the first, safe harbor for their, for their kids. No matter what emotion issue they, they run into. If the parents cannot deal with it, yeah, parents need education. School, I agree that you want to keep the kids safe. We all want to, right? But you cannot use this policy set parents as an enemy to their kids. Or you cannot, your parents not safe. You cannot go to your parents. Your parents will get against it. Why? Why you think that way? Isn't the parent supposed love more than other people does for your kids? Well, at least, you know, like other, I, I don't remember who said that. School is supposed to be a bridge, right? If you, 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 if you see some issues with the kids, you're supposed to call the parents in the first beginning, telling them what situation, right? But you can warn the parents, right? And give them some little education, how to deal with it. I think it's the right way. But you cannot say, parents, you cannot tell, oh, you, 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 your parents were against it. Assume your parents were saying no. But at least parents can do more open discussion with their kids and find out why? Is it because born with it? Or they just because someone tell them it's cool to be transgender, or cool to be a boy or girl? Isn't that supposed to be the way? Why suffer the fifty-seven fifty-six?
Sorry, time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to mention, please let the speakers each finish before the next speaker comes up. No commenting or talking in the audience when someone's up at the microphone. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Cal. Oh, Brett, okay.
Can I just ask a procedural question?
Brett, Brett, you can move.
Good evening, Brett Baker. Uh, I live in Edison, New Jersey. Uh, I first need to address that when I was in middle school, I was told smoking was cool. I uh became a smoker much, many years later, but it was not because I was told it was cool. Uh, as a middle schooler, I played grand theft auto a lot. Um, and as a thirty-nine-year-old male, I'm not a serial killer or anything like that. So I refuse to accept that the media influences anybody. But here we are. Good evening, board members and fellow community members. As I said, my name's Brett Baker. I live in Edison and my pronouns are he/him. I stand here as an advocate and an ally, but also as a husband, a parent, a former educator and school leader of fifteen years and someone deeply committed to both my children and the educational environment we're collectively building here in Edison. Our son is a nail polish-wearing first grader at James Monroe. And I don't share that because I think it's important. I just think it's cool and it's part of him. And our, as she'll proudly say, three-and-a-half-year-old daughter will soon join him there.
So, we have someone speaking, so be respectful with the other uh speakers. Thank you. Sorry, Brett.
Thank you, Jerry. As I said, my son, our son is a nail polish-wearing first grader at James Monroe. And our, as she'll proudly say, three-and-a-half-year-old daughter will join him there soon. I don't say this lightly. I no longer feel safe in the school district. I no longer feel my son is safe in the school district. I no longer feel my daughter will be safe in the school district. And quite honestly, the email my wife sent to you all this evening or this afternoon, I know will go unread by many of you and I no longer feel that she is safe. I say these words with a heavy heart, having thought carefully about them for the past forty-eight hours. I choose my words carefully. And I say these words because it seems that this board does not care about my children's rights. You see, unlike the board that sits in front of me, I sought to understand the perspective of those who support the repeal of policy fifty-seven fifty-six. I tried to find out who I could talk to. But I've got to be honest, since Jerry, Ralph, and Ronak have not yet submitted their financial disclosures for their campaign, I can't find the names of people donating enough money to possibly have significant enough influence to influence district policy. So I spoke to some board members. Board members who indirectly said they don't care about my children's rights. And I stress indirectly because nobody said it directly. But it can be inferred that they don't care about my children's rights or the rights of other children. That in the matter of a student's gender identity and their right to identify themselves, the parents quote "right to know" trumps a student's right to determine it themselves and to determine who knows and when they know. Much of what I'm about to say I shared in October, but apparently and frustratingly, it needs to be repeated again. It is neither melodramatic nor hyperbolic to say that the one expectation I have had consistently consistently of this board since I moved to Edison in twenty sixteen and began attending these meetings was to ensure that the board and district leadership gathered the input of all, and I stress "all", stakeholders involved in making any decision. And I will always draw the line when it comes to something that impedes on the rights of my children or other children. You all claim to have the best interests of children in mind and have allowed the rhetoric in this town about this issue to devolve into such a horrifying state. The pure misinformation is staggering and appalling. Quite honestly, the parent shaming has become disgusting. You are a board of You are a board elected to oversee the direction of the school district, not to make determinations about what I need to do as a parent of my child. You don't have that right to say it's my responsibility to know everything my child is doing. As far as I can tell, New Jersey says I have to make sure my child attends school or a school equivalent from the age of six to sixteen, period. You are out of bounds trying to dictate any other parental responsibilities from up on the dais. I need this board and future boards to understand that in the wake of a global pandemic, we have academic learning outcomes that still need to improve dramatically and urgently. I need this board and future boards to understand that the threat of gun violence is very real and our entire world say nothing about the threat of gun violence in our schools. I need this board and future boards to take seriously that the teaching profession and working in schools is a difficult one and one that is grossly underpaid, grossly undervalued and grossly underappreciated. I say all that because I've been asked before that this is the priority that we should be addressing right now. Seems wrong. Repealing policy 5756 without a reasonable effort to protect via another policy, students, teachers and school staff remains grossly negligent. I need this board and I need future boards and I need everyone to understand that every child, no matter their age, no matter their gender, no matter their race, ethnicity or religion, and certainly, most certainly not their sexual orientation or gender identity, every child, regardless of all of those things, deserves as a basic right, the right to be loved. The right to be cared for, the right to be understood and the right to feel safe every day when they walk into school. By taking away a child's right to make the decision about who knows what about themselves is the antithesis to what any educational institution should stand for. Say nothing about this body. It is the antithesis to the very notion of free choice and free thought. It is the antithesis to the academic direction of the school district, which seeks to prepare all students, regardless of their identity, for a college or career of their choice. And it's disrespectful to this parent. It's downright disrespectful to this parent who believes that all children have rights. And while access to those rights may make me uncomfortable at times and I have to learn a little bit more sometimes, and while I may have questions at times, that means I need to lean into that discomfort and learn more, seek out more information, seek to understand and then, and only then, make a decision that follows research and study after study after study. Our students and our community members deserve a board that models respect and sound decision-making and a process that values their input and voices. Yet this board's current actions suggest an alarming disregard for the students. We are all here to serve and the trust placed in you. One board member that I spoke with shared that another board member, and I quote, "talks to people and those people want this repealed." So my question is this. How do I join this exclusive group of Edison parents and residents who get to influence policy so directly and concretely? Which WhatsApp group do I need to join? Where do I send my campaign check? I wasn't able to attend the Pulse meetings that were so beautifully orchestrated, but I've heard that this wasn't discussed at either of those meetings. If this isn't being discussed at the Pulse meetings, what's the point of a Pulse meeting? Isn't the point of it to gather parent feedback and ideas? The trust parents in this district places in and on you demands thoughtful, inclusive policies and a commitment to every student's rights. Please prioritize those rights and refocus on the work that will uplift and protect every child in our schools. You weren't elected to win elections. You were elected to protect my children and every other child in this district. In closing, I urge this board to remember the trust placed in you by our community, to remember that you represent every child in this district and every parent in this district and to vote no on any effort to repeal policy 5756 tonight. Thank you.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle in Edison. I've been in Edison for over forty years as a resident, as a parent, as a teacher, as a Board of Education member. And my latest goal is a grandparent. And my fear is we've gotten out of order. The number one thing that I get up here every January and say to the new people elected, remember, you are not elected to run this board, this district. You are elected to make sure it was run well by the administration. And as I was on the board, we were broken up into different committees. And each committee took their job very seriously. One of them being the Policy Committee, which I thank God I was never on because I substituted once and I wanted to rip my eyes out. But I took it that the people that were on that committee were willing to do that. And when they came back and they answered questions, I had full trust in them that they did the research and I accepted what they said was the right decision. That was in 2019. And as time goes on, nothing came up. And then all of a sudden, in '24, it came alive. And there was another committee that was established in that year to look into it. They made a decision. And at that point in time, all hell broke loose. So I went in, even though I didn't want to, and I read each and every word of that policy numerous times so I could understand it. And then I went and I questioned it. There was things that I had questions about in that policy. And luckily, the person I spoke to was able to give me the answers that I needed to hear, that our children would be safe, that they would be treated with respect and they could go about their education in the proper way. And that's what the job of the administration is to do. I'm appalled that this is back on the docket again. If it was decided at one point, it was talked about at another point, the only thing I can think of, is it a very important election year? Is that what your ideal of this is to do? We bring people here honest and true, talking about their feelings and how they feel about it. And it makes me feel very comfortable and I thank you for sharing. And people have a right to say their opinion. But as a board, you need to understand what your committee says, find out and do your own research and do the right thing and it's not politics. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Jennifer Woodruff and I am a prior resident of Edison and I live in Marlboro now. Thank you very much, board, for your time and efforts. You've been entrusted with a paramount responsibility. That includes deciding what policies and what curriculum should be implemented in this district. And that is a big undertaking. I've spoken against the transgender 5756 policy in the past meetings. It is divisive and it's discriminatory. It puts labels on children and gives special rights to some at the expense of others. And it is deceptive to parents and puts teachers in an unfair place. But it's not just the policy that's troublesome to me. It is the direction that we are heading. The 5756 policy needs to be abolished to send a message to the teachers' union and our state government to stop interfering with our children's upbringing and moral standards while keeping parents out of the equation. The government seems to think they know what is best for our children and the parents are clueless or they are the problem. Why are we teaching children as early as second grade and maybe even earlier? That there is a smorgasbord of genders when we know that there are only two genders and that will never change? We are filling little children's heads with gender ideology at a time when they are impressionable and little sponges and so trusting of their teachers. Why are we teaching something that is not true and can only be a source of confusion and anxiety? And we're seeing that in children. Why, we're, we're a big cause for this rise in gender confusion. The curriculum is being sprinkled with gender ideology and not just in the health class. Gender studies are in social studies curriculum and math problems. Using boys, girls and binary children for examples. Why? We are to blame for the rise in this confusion. Why are we sexualizing our children? In fifth grade, we are giving them information on all kinds of sexual acts and preferences at an age when they are not emotionally or intellectually able to handle it. In eighth grade, nothing is left to the imagination. Why do our schools have days, weeks and even months celebrating LGBTQ plus plus? We are encouraging and celebrating gender confusion. We are responsible when children continue down a destructive path of puberty blockers and cross-sex hormones and irreversible surgery. Why is the state trying to pass laws where children as young as sixteen can have access to medical and mental health assistance without parental knowledge? The state wants to establish health centers on school grounds, making it easy for students to access health services without parental consent or involvement. But this is only a small list of what's going on, what's going on in the public schools in our state. I am sure there is much more that is developing behind the scenes. This is government overreach and it must stop. The government and unions are interfering with the raising of our children and our grandchildren, their moral beliefs and values, and it's only going to get worse. I believe that enough townships rescind this 5756 policy, it'll send a message to the state that they have gone too far. Our children are protected with LAD and anti-bullying laws. Having a separate transgender policy only serves to tell children that you can change your gender. Loving a child is telling them the truth. Thank you for listening and your time for the betterment of the township, schools, the welfare of our township's children and ultimately all children. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening and namaste all. This, like, my statement is not at all related with the policy, but because it's Teachers Appreciation Month, I thought of taking one moment to just share what we do every year for the teacher appreciation.
Excuse me, so this is for the resolution only? So you can wait for something that's not related to the policy?
Okay, I'll wait then.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry. Yes?
Hello, my name is Camille Silva. I'm a resident of North Edison, sophomore at John P. Stevens High School. I have stage fright. I don't like talking in big groups of people, but I feel like it's important that as a trans student here, it, my view and my view should probably be important to hear. I've just been taking notes while listening and would like to talk about just something. Now, I transitioned in roughly seventh, eighth grade about three years ago. I am a girl and have been using the girls bathroom for just as long. Now, first point, why? Why do you think you're a girl? Well, if you were born a woman and continue to be a woman for the rest of your life, if somebody called you man, it'd feel a little unnatural, a little jarring. Same thing for me. I don't, it doesn't feel right. And so I changed. Now, if this policy were to be abolished, I'd have to either, A, go to the men's room, which is both uncomfortable for me and probably the men there, or travel halfway across the school to go to the counselor's office, which, as you can imagine, have you seen how big John P. Stevens is? That takes so long. I would not like to do that, please. Now, the point of, oh, there are only two genders. Gender and sex, different things. Sex is what you're born with. Gender is what you feel. Also intersex people? Now, they're infiltrating our education system with gender size and math. And first of all, in math, we're learning how to graph, how to graph cosine functions. We are not learning gender plus gender. The last time, and in social studies, we learned about like gay people during civil rights for a week. That's, that's about it. The vast majority of people are not getting surgeries at twelve years old. I have been trans for three years. I am not getting surgeries. That is wildly inaccurate. And lastly, please cite your sources. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Gerald Macleod, Dolores Turco Foundation, Neptune. I'd like to begin with a message to our friends in the LGBT community. We're not your enemy. We're parents that love our children and we love you too and we want the best for you. You are created by a God that knows you intimately and loves you passionately. You are perfect just the way you are and God has, your life has great meaning and purpose. And you don't have to change a thing about your body. You just need to seek God's will for your life and to follow it and you will know peace, joy and love. I'd like to just say a few things just about the suicide. I've provided this board with the factual research that discusses suicide. And the research shows that a person that transitions is nineteen times more likely to commit suicide than the rest of the population. Those are the facts. You've seen the research and you've seen the, uh, the studies that go with it. In addition, I'd like to say that parents are the primary protective factor for children and research shows that they also are primary protective for, preventing suicide. Then I'd like to get into the policy to kind of update. You've seen a lot of my stuff in the past, but I'd like to bring you up to date on the administration's statement regarding transgender issues from Washington. Quote, "Schools and university will lose federal funds if you allow men to invade women's sports and women's spaces. This applies to our whole K through 12 system. The Department of Justice is also coordinating with state and local enforcement to fight child abuse in our school system. It is child abuse to change a child's gender, particularly if you do not inform the parents, which is a gross violation of parental rights. Castration surgeries, castration drugs, sterilization treatment of children violates sound medical ethics. They are completely unwarranted. They harm children for life irreversibly. It's child abuse and it's child medical malpractice." I wanted to point out from the American College of Pediatrics and the Academy of Medical Ethics that transition affirmation is not proven to be safe or effective long-term. It does not reduce suicides. It does not repair mental issue, uh, health issues or trauma. Minors can not truly give informed consent. Children have developing, as you've heard, and immature brains. Their minds change office. Often, they are prone to risk-taking. They are vulnerable to peer pressure and they don't grasp long-term consequences. And according to this American pediatric group, "gender-affirming care" is a euphemistic phrase that supporters of sex-change medications and surgeries apply to the evil that they commit. In their minds, children should be able to decide whether they wish to be boys or girls as, and everyone should accept that as, as truth. However, they fail to recognize that male and female is a determination by God at conception. The problem with 5756 is that what can happen is, under the current policy, schools can work with professionals on a confidential basis without the knowledge or consent of parents to transition minors without meeting threshold diagnosis or even appropriate mental health screening. And children are, will be subjected to harmful experimental, these, these drugs are experimental. They're used to castrate sex offenders. And even if one child is subjected to these standard practices without the knowledge or consent of his parents, that could be exposing the board to potential serious litigation. In the, the 5756, it talks about, you'll hear that we do not do these surgeries or we do not do this in the schools, but 5756 requires that, that these children are, you find gender professionals who conduct, and unfortunately inadequate evaluations of patients. And they don't explore the underlying mental, uh, mental health issues that can contribute to dysphoria, gender dysphoria. And that is one of the problems. And in And in addition, in instances where the parent or guardian and minor disagree, the school district is advised to consult their board attorney regarding the minor's civil rights. And they also, this policy suggests that advocacy groups are contacted, such as the New Jersey Department of Children and Families, referring parents to child abuse neglect and the missing children web page. So this alienates parents from their children. So I, I did send an email, which provides more detail as to why the policy would be in violation of the new administration standards that are coming out of Washington. You will see that in your email. And I thank you for the, this opportunity to speak with the board, and I do commend you. I've, I've been in front of at least thirty school boards. This is one of the finest school boards I've seen. You have one of the highest academic standards that I've seen, and I commend you on, on the excellent job that you're doing. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Yeah, David. Yeah, I, David, before you start, you know.
Please, you know, this room is small. We're talking about, you know, you probably don't realize, it just interferes with the people speaking, so please respect the speakers, both whether you're a hall or you're a guest. You know, that's all. Go ahead.
David, I'm a resident of Edison. As a parent, I feel so horrible to hear tonight that how parents are labeled from a lot of the previous discussion. I mean, to all parents, do we truly believe that the government cares and love more about our children than ourselves? As a parent, I certainly don't believe that's the case. Parental involvement is essential to a child's well-being and development. It's also vital to the effectiveness of any school effort. That's why parents are informed when their child is late for the school, absent for a school, maybe did not get, like, academically, you know, good standing. So, from the previous arguments to support this policy, I mean, to me, it's unthinkable that, how you are describing parents. Some of the argument, parents are not trustworthy. As a parent, I'm always educating my kids to do good in school, trust the teacher, you know, trust the, follow the policy in the school, and now you are educating my kids that parents is not trustworthy. What kind of education you are doing at the school? Describing parents' involvement in such scenario as in harm's way. We do, as a parent, we always, we love our kids. Even when they choose to be, say, you know, transgender or whatever, we are going to find a good solution for them. Sometimes, it can be difficult, but a parent is always loving their children. They're going to find a solution for them from the long-term perspective. And for the rest of their life, it's going to be the children and their parents who has to deal with the situation, whether it's good or bad. For a lot of the people who are trying to keep this policy, you maybe just deal with it for, like, one or two years. You are not going to take the, like, full rest of the life for their family. It, it is the parents and the children who is going to deal with that. The assumption that this policy, that parents are harmful to the children, is totally wrong. So, this policy should not, should be abolished, and this policy should not be in there in the first place by the state. Dear board member, Mr. Ronek Patel, Mr. Erico, and Mr. Shi, when you run for the Board of Education last year, one of your key promises is to defend the parent and children, children's rights, and the election result clearly told you, you know, giving you the answer by majority of the Edison residents. So now, and also to all of the other board members, you have the answer by the Edison residents and the parents, what's their opinion? So, it's very clear that you should abolish this policy. So, you should take the voice of Edison residents and abolish this policy. Although we don't have a lot of Edison parents here, we do have some, like, political activists from other town, you have the answer from the last election result, from the Edison residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Anthony.
Anthony Marra from Edison. Here to speak on policy fifty-seven-five-six. Love works in truth. Is it love to lie to the one you love? Obviously not. So let's cut to the chase. What's the truth? The truth is what God tells us. There's one voice that's not being heard tonight. It's His voice. And He tells us, there are only two genders, male and female. In fact, He stamped it in our bodies. The guys have the XY chromosome, the ladies, the XX chromosome. They can't be changed with hormone blockers, surgery, frankly, anything else. Whatever's done to try to change it doesn't change the fundamental building box in our bodies. And he's, and he, God tells us in His word, "Have you not read that He created them from the beginning, made them male and female, and said, 'For this reason, a man shall leave his father and mother and be joined to his wife, and the two shall become one flesh.'" In other words, just two genders, not male, female, and a half a dozen others. I've attended enough board meetings to hear a phrase called "portrait of a graduate." Does a portrait of a graduate include a student who can't reproduce in the usual fashion? Because that's what changing gender will do, surgeries, hormone blockers, you're going to substantially reduce, maybe completely eliminate, the ability of a student to reproduce in the usual fashion. Is that what you want? Do you want your students to graduate high academics, reading, writing, and Richmond Tech, all those, but they can't reproduce? Is that what you want? Is that a portrait of a graduate? I hope not. The policy that should exist is one that counsels the student on the gender to which he or she was born. If that student has difficulty with it, you counsel. Just says you would counsel a student on a, on a particular subject he's having difficulty with, math, reading, writing. Oh, no, he's not doing well. Let's sit down with this student, with the parents, and talk to this student about the problem here. Few days ago, emailed you some material from a website called "He Cheated." I want to read it, read some of the material, because I can't say it any better than what's in here. It speaks primarily to how girls are not being protected. I've heard a lot about protection tonight. How about protecting the girls in sports? He says he's a girl. Reality is irrelevant. Logic is irrelevant. His physical body and physical sex are irrelevant. His word is law. If he says it, that's the end of it. He alone gets to decide who he competes with and against female athletes, and female athletes have no choice. He's allowed in the locker rooms where the female athletes are changing. How about protecting the girls? How about keeping a safe environment for the girls in the locker rooms? He's allowed in locker rooms where female athletes are changing in a state of undress and a position of vulnerability. They're given no warning, they're given no autonomy over their bodies, no privacy or safe spaces. Every accommodation is for him. His comfort is the utmost importance. Theirs is dismissed. Female athletes are told this is necessary. He can't join the boys because he doesn't fit in. This goes on and on like this. Keep a safe place for the girls, please. There are incidents, it's pretty much recorded, I, I've spoken about this before, about girls getting injured in sports because of transgender students. The guys are simply built better for this kind of stuff. Let me rephrase. The, it's pretty much understood in athletics that using steroids is wrong, whether you're a male or female. It gives an unfair advantage to the athlete. Well, that's what you're doing. You're giving unfair advantage to the trans athlete. The trans athlete, as a guy, he's got stronger bones, stronger muscles. The fact that he tries to be a girl doesn't change that. That's unfair. Shame on you. Shame on you. They're being cheated out of award, winning a gold medal or a first place in some kind of athletics. I've spoken often about the fifth commandment, honor your father and your mother. Are you really honoring mom and dad by keeping them in the dark? Really? Is that what you want as a parent? To be kept in the dark? Don't tell mom and dad what a son or daughter is planning on doing changing gender. Things have been said about the need for parents to be able to be involved in their children. Please abolish this policy. It's harmful, it's dangerous, it's doing harm to, to the students in Edison.
Thank you. Anybody else? Excuse me, excuse me.
You can speak if you come up to the podium during public comment, but not, I think after everyone gets one turn, they can speak a second time.
Unless there's something to rebut. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
My name is Diego Jimenez. Used to be a resident here. Unfortunately, did not want to be anymore, but we sat here.
Can you move the microphone?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you.
We've all been here, and the main reason that we're here is, is that you care. And, and we hear all of you right now. And the people speaking out against this policy, everything I'm hearing, all the things I have in, that I hear in common is, you know best and you are in control. Right? The Bible says this, you're not really listening to science. So why do you feel that your child will feel comfortable coming to you about something you don't quite understand? We're not perfect. We, we're not going to get everything immediately. Like, I'm a cisgender, cis-het man, and my ex was, I was with them almost eight years, and they came out to be non-binary, because, guess what? When they were ten years old, and they started feeling like they were bisexual, they talked to their parents, and they got a punch in the face. I, I, I hear you guys, and I, you guys are caring, you guys are here, and, and I understand that. And, and I'd like to think, if your children came to you for this, you would, you would grow, and you would understand, and you'd want to listen. But not every parent is like you guys. Not every parent is willing to grow. Not every parent is willing to say, "My child's going through some stuff, let me, let me hear, let me hear them out. Let me, let me see the signs, what's going on? Is this, is this actually a thing?" My, my parents, growing up, are, I'm a first-generation American, my parents are immigrants. And unfortunately, they came from a country that was not as accepting as the United States, unfortunately. And growing up, all I heard was, "If you ever come out to be gay, you're not our son anymore. So don't even think about it." And like, I wasn't thinking about it, but Jesus, like, that's terrifying. So I did not feel comfortable going to my parents about that, because I knew I was going to get punched in the face. I almost got in a fight with my parents because I got a tattoo when I was nineteen, which is wild. But I just, I just want to bring us back here, because we all care. We all care about the children here. But just remember, children are still trying to figure things out, and not every household is safe. Not every parent deserves to be a parent. You all are here, you are here, and you are here, and you care, and that matters. But some of those parents do not. Some of those home environments are not safe. And sometimes, a caring teacher is the only one they, they can feel comfortable talking to. Like, I, I had a teacher in, in middle school, I felt comfortable coming to when, when things really got bad. And, and I'm so grateful I had them, because I could, oh, sure as not go to my parents about any of that. That was terrifying. But luckily, my parents grew. But, you know, allow them to have that opportunity, allow them that space to figure things out, allow them to grow, allow them to figure it out, and then they'll, they will come to you. And they're going to want your support. They're going to want your love. And they're, and they're going to be as confident and happy as they ever were, because they had that space to grow and figure it out. And all they ask is just for you to be their parent and for you to love them. And that's all they want. And then you guys are going to have a great relationship, I guarantee. You let them, let them grow and let them figure it out. They might not know the things at first, they might not understand who they are. They'll get there. Might take a little while, but just be patient. We all love, we all love our kids, we all want to be good parents. Just, just have empathy. I know if something's different from what you grew up knowing, something's different from what you were taught, just put yourself in this, in these people's shoes. We've had parents, we've had teachers, we have doctors, we had actual transgender people speaking in front of you, crying and telling you their feelings. All I'm asking is just, just put yourself in their shoes. Hear what they're saying, hear their emotions. I, I can only imagine what you're going through. And I, I was, I'm grateful to be in a safe environment I am now, but I didn't have that growing up, and some of these kids did not either. So please, keep this policy in place. Live with empathy, be there for your kids. And thank you.
Thank you. No, no, you already spoken to, okay, yes, you've just walked in. Good timing.
Hi, my name is Kaer Avall. I'm a resident of Edison, 50 Vincent Behan Boulevard. I am a proud, I'd, I'd like to continue say, saying that I'm a proud graduate of Edison Public Schools. I went to Benjamin Franklin Elementary School, I went to Herbert Hoover Middle School, and I went to Edison High School, and I graduated in 2022. And I was in the marching band, and I was in student council, and a lot of my friends were queer, and a lot of my friends were very open about exploring their identities, because we were kids, we were teenagers. And one thing that was really, really important to me was the fact that our teachers always made space for us. They always gave us the room to be ourselves, because when we went back to school after the lockdown, there was, you know, we, a lot of kids found a journey of self-discovery over lockdown. They all learned new things about themselves, because we were trapped in one place for one year without any, like, social interaction with the people we cared about, right? So our, we came back to school, and we would joke that, oh my God, there's kids wearing cat ears in the hallway, there're kid, there's kids wearing cattails in the hallways. But it's like, it didn't affect our education. Those kids who were wearing cat ears just liked wearing cat ears. I wore cat ears to middle school too, because I thought it was fun, because we liked the headbands and we liked the designs. So we had the room to explore who we were becoming, and it never hurt our education. It didn't hurt the actual things we were learning about. And I've heard some people, I've been listening to the livestream, and I just, I realized, oh my God, I have to be there right now. So, I, I just, I had to pull up. And there, it never mattered what we learned about. And some people are saying that there's gender ideology being taught in schools, but when you really look down to what gender studies teach, classes teach you, it's more about becoming more tolerant around, of the world around you. It's not about saying that these people are doing things and you have to be like them as well. When they say that they're teaching gender studies in history, what they're teaching is about the Seneca Falls Convention. They're teaching that women wanted to have the right to vote, so women organized to have the right to vote. When they're teaching about queer studies in history class, they're teaching that the Stonewall riots were a thing that happened, because there was a lot of brutality against there was a lot of brutality against a certain community. And that community said, hey, we are being hurt by the government and we want a place to be ourselves. And we want to be open about who we love and that's why they legalized gay marriage in 2015. That was not a two-year-long fight, that was not a five-year-long fight. That was a decades, decades-long fight. I'm a Rutgers student, I'm a political science student at Rutgers University. And all of these things that I learn in my classes, it's not trying to make me into something that I'm not. Nobody has ever asked me to become more radical or more, nobody has ever asked me to change my gender. That's, that's not a thing that happens in school. I spent four years at Edison High School. Nobody ever told me that I was wrong for being a girl and liking that I was a girl. And the thing is, when my friends really didn't want to be girls, nobody told them that they were wrong either because they weren't wrong. Sometimes it is really hard to grow up in a certain body that doesn't match who you are inside. Because kids face all of these issues and sometimes it's really hard to come out to your parents about even the minorist of issues. It took me, my dad's over there. He had to drive me because I can't drive this week. Because I'm getting ready for my dance recital at Edison High School, actually. I'm, I'm paying the Board of Education to use Edison High School's facilities. So I really want to make sure that my money is going to be used in the right way after this. Because I learned all of these things in my college career and in my high school career that said, if you're coming here to learn, we're going to teach you and we're not going to make you accept anything that you're not. Because, I'm so sorry, I lost my train of thought. I think I was going somewhere about how there isn't really one driving force that says, all of these kids will be treated the same way at home. And I think that's what the repeal of this policy is trying to say. That when these kids go home, they will all be treated the same way. Because the people who are their parents are also the parents of the people pushing to abolish this policy. But every child has different parents. It took me three years to tell my parents that I was struggling with my mental health. It took me so long to tell my parents that, hey, I've been, I failed a class. And I had a breakdown, total breakdown sophomore year, because I failed a class and I didn't know how they would react. And they didn't react that well at first, let me tell you that. And over the past five years, my dad has, you know, come around and he's learned. And that's what I think that these policies are preventing people from doing. If you're telling a kid straight off the bat, hey, we're going to send you home, we're going to tell your parents everything? Now they're in danger because when my counselor at EHS told my parents that I had been harming myself, I thought, I thought the school was out to get me. I thought the school was out to get me, but they were concerned for my safety. And it's not that being trans is going to concern my safety. If I have a parent who is accepting of a specific thing, then they'll be accepting of it. But my parents were concerned about my health, so they had to kind of, sorry, my time is up. But I just want to make my point that there is a major difference between these two things.
Okay.
And protect trans kids.
Sorry. Anybody else? Yes, Brian.
Brian Rivera, Edison. So I am from Edison, grew up in Edison, went to schools in Edison. Father of two kids in Edison, school administrator, former Board of Education member. And I have concerns regarding the abolishment of this policy. And it's through experiences, even through my work. Not every kid goes to a healthy home. I've watched domestic abuse, I experienced domestic abuse. It sucks. Sorry. Bad memories. Anyway. Good evening. I'm here tonight as a concerned member of the community to address handling Policy 5756. I was deeply troubled to learn that this policy was placed on the agenda for removal without prior discussion or transparency amongst all, amongst all the board members of education. A decision of this importance, one that directly affects students, families and staff, should not be made behind closed doors without providing all board members with information needed to make well-informed decisions. Information regarding to this policy I know is not given to all these board members. They're coming here making a decision without the advice from attorneys or any other paperwork. I know that for, I know that for a fact because I spoke to board members and I spoke to other people about it. So they're coming here and they're going to vote and they don't have the proper information to make that vote. From what I understand, there was no opportunity for the full board to review or discuss the policy beforehand and no legal guidance from the board attorney was presented prior to being added to the agenda. This lack of communication and process undermines public trust, raises serious concerns about how decisions are being made. This has been going on since January, it's a, it's a joke. People are being supplied information, certain people, but everyone else is not getting that information. And now they're being asked to pass a budget where they're getting no information. To abolish a policy, not getting information. To get rid of vendors without giving information. It's a select group of people getting, getting information and people are being put in harms way trying to make decisions without information. So I just want to talk about the history of Policy 5756 and how it was introduced to Edison. Township Public Schools. And this is all based on the minutes that are on the website that you could look up for yourself. At the July 22nd, 2019 Board of Education meeting, minutes from the policy committee that was held on June 28th, 2019 was reported. The policy committee met, which included Yuna Chen, Richard Brescher, Teresa Ward and Falguni Patel. The minutes state that the committee reviewed all the mandatory and optional recent policy changes that were proposed by Strauss Esme, including Policy 5756. On September 23rd, 2019, the Board of Education unanimously voted for the first reading of the new and revised policies. Jerry She was president, Ralph Erica was the vice president and Shannon was on the board as well. On September 27th, 2019, the policy committee met again, talking about the mandated policies. On October 7th, 2019, the policy committee met again and the committee went over more mandated policies again. And then October 16th, 2019, the Board of Education meeting, the Board of Education unanimously voted for a second reading of the new revised policies. Again, Jerry was president, Mr. Erica was the vice president and Shannon was on the board. They all voted yes to this policy in 2019. So I have questions, which I know they're not going to be answered. It's infamous here, they only answer our questions. So question number one. It's directed to Jerry, Ralph and Shannon, since you're still on the board and you participated in this. This policy was vetted three times by the policy committee and the board approved the first reading and the second reading in 2019. Please tell the public what your stance is on this matter. You all approved it in 2019. Why in 2024 and 25 school year, there is an issue with this policy? Please state your stance. Number two, my question actually goes to Ralph, but Ralph left. You know, Ralph started his career as a teacher. He was a vice principal, principal, security guard and currently teaches in the classroom. With all these hats that, that Ralph wears or worn, are you sure that this, you feel comfortable removing a policy that's designed to protect kids? Kids that sit in front of you. You, you teach these kids. And then number three, my third question is directed to Mr. Dr. Alderelli, I apologize. If this policy is removed, what will you instruct your staff to do absent this policy? Because to me, it's pure negligence to remove a policy without having something in place. Now, the interesting part about me was I sat on the board here. And we spent over $25,000 in legal fees talking to six different attorneys. And they all said to stay away from this policy. It's already in the courts, people are taking care of it, staying good standing with the state. Because it also could say it'll affect your funding. First time they abolished it, three days later, we lost our funding for pre-K. Coinkydink? I, I don't know. But, and finally, you know, when you ran for reelection, all you, you all ran under a slogan, students first. This time around, if you use that slogan, students first, please put parentheses stating, except the LGBTQ community. Because based on your decisions today.
Time's up, sorry.
These students don't matter to you.
Sorry, time's up.
Matt Revnak, teacher of 38 years, 36 years here in Edison and currently the ETA president. So first of all, there is nowhere in the curriculum that says, and we teach, somebody become LGBTQ, transition, whatever. We're here for support. We're here to keep our kids safe. And I want to share a few things. Number one, as a parent of two daughters, one who's going to be 31 and the other one is 27, even to this day, yeah, I know, I don't believe it, right? My daughters know that they can come and talk to my wife and myself about everything. It's about parenting. Okay? And that's the relationship we have. My older daughter, who was married a few years ago, recently got divorced. Divorce does not happen in my family. My grandparents married 58 years when my grandfather died. My parents were married 58 years when my father died. I'm going to be married 35 years, my brother's married almost 40, my sister's not married, never was. So it was difficult, but she knew she can come and talk to us about it. If the child can talk to their parents about it, I'm sure the young lady from JP Stevens has, because they know the parent is supportive. But if the child can't, there's a reason for it, because they're in fear. And I also want to share something, I know Mr. Rivera mentioned it. I lived in an abusive relationship, a father that was abusive to three children and a husband that was abusive to his wife, even though my mother stuck with him for 58 years. And I would have been scared shit to go tell him something like this. I would have been one of those students that would have been very upset and there's no way in hell I would have told my parents, I'm gay, I want to change my gender. Hell, he'd beat the crap out of you for anything little that you did wrong. And that's what we're talking about here. It's not the child that goes to their parent that's accepting, it's the child that is afraid. They feel this way. And I have a cousin that was homosexual, came from a jock family and it took him till he was about 27 years old to tell his father that he was gay. Because he lived in fear of how the father, his father, my uncle would react at the time. So that's what we're talking about here. Second thing about the teachers. I had at least five students that died at young ages, car accidents, motorcycle accident. Two have monuments in JP Stevens from 9/11. I know emotionally what that does to a teacher. These are kids I had that, and I always tell my students, I'm part of your life and you're part of my life for the next year. In some cases, two or three. In fact, one of them I had, Naeha Shendi, after two years was coming back from college, sent me an email, I'm going to come see you, I want to tell you, talk to you and how well I'm doing, et cetera, et cetera. I was in a car accident the night before she was coming to see me. I still have the email, I will always keep it. As a teacher, if I have to be the person that's forced now to tell their parent and then the next day that kid comes in abused or worse yet, because of the parent's reaction, takes their own life, I have to live with that the rest of my life as well. And that's a serious thing to have to do. So I agree with Mr. Rivera, one of the things I, if you're going to abolish this, you should have a policy or a procedure on how stuff like this will be handled. That's important. I had two students throughout my career, very early, and it wasn't about this, but one was a teenage pregnancy situation, similar situation. Came to me in trust. Parents were going to kill her if she, when she disclosed that, you know, we did the right thing. I talked her into, let's go see the nurse, the counselor, got the administrator, called the parents in. And I know she had the child, in fact, I said I could have taught her grandchildren. Do the right thing. I also have a student years ago that talked to me about a situation with him. And it had to do with the parents. And it's ironic because the next day the mother called me, said, Mr. Revnak, what did you say to my son Aaron? Remember the name from 34 years ago? He's a different person today. And it was a discussion, we have never mentioned suicide to me because I would have had to act upon that. But the mother told me he was suicidal. And unfortunately, what I would have liked to tell the mother is you're part of the problem. I couldn't do that and I wouldn't do that. But that was the problem. So that's what these students, these young people that are not coming forward, that want to keep it sort of secretive, that's the reason. Maybe at some point they will tell the parents. I know, again, being in an abusive situation, yeah, I finally was able to stand up to my father when I became bigger than he was. You know, or I can, you know, fend for myself sort of. Unfortunately, my mother wasn't like that, including almost up to the day he died. And that is a sad situation. And that's what we're talking about here. So consider what you're doing. One final thing, that policy was developed in coordination with state law. The law hasn't changed. It's almost like you're snubbing your nose at the law then by retracting this. That's what we're talking about also. So, you know, think twice before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any first timers?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Alex. I'm a student at Rutgers. I also worked at, if you guys are familiar with STEM Academy, it is now part of the public school system in Edison. It's in North Edison. And I'm here to talk about.
Get closer to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Sorry. The situations that this will be putting kids in is not only going to be harmful to them and their well-being, but their education. And as educators and as people on the Board of Education, that has to be priority. If these kids are worried about their safety, they cannot focus on their education. And their safety is obviously the most important thing. There's policies in place to keep our kids safe. And this is going directly against that. I know there were a lot of good points made before, so I'm trying not to make any repetitive statements. I had a student in the summer, last summer, and she chose to change her name. And me and all the other staff at STEM Academy, we decided obviously to respect that. And the change was immediate. She loved to be called, I won't say her name. But when we would call attendance and she would hear her name, the one that she chose, the one that she wanted, she would just light up. And this girl had been through so much, she lost her dad two years before. And helping her find her way through this and helping her have a safe space when she had dealt with so much was so important, so important to me. And eventually, her grandmother, who is raising her after her dad passed, she came around to it. And I know that's, it doesn't happen all the time. But that's just a story of when this, this does work out, when it just takes the caretakers a little bit more time to come around. And had I been forced to go and tell her grandmother, I'm not sure if it would have had the same outcome as her coming to her grandmother on her own terms and discussing it. And I think that's something that you need to think about. You need to think about how these kids need to be able to come to their identity on their own terms and meet with their caregivers on their own terms about it as well, regardless of what their situation at home is like.
Thank you very much. Any other first timers? Any other first timers? Okay, you want to go for a second?
Mr. She, Mr. She.
Yes.
To rebut, we have to take and have a conversation.
Yes.
With the person.
Yes.
We haven't had a rebut or a conversation unless, unless you want to give nine minutes. You have six minutes once and if you want to rebut, you have to rebut what we've discussed. We haven't discussed anything with them. But if you would like, if you'd like to give them another three minutes, which is fine. But you had said that you wanted to give everybody six minutes. I'm only going by policy. I'm only going by policy.
So they can rebut with other people's comments? Okay?
That's fine, I just want to make sure it's clear.
Thank you, thank you, that's, okay, I, yes, go ahead.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Okay.
The first timers are all done, so this is the second time. This is a rebuttal.
May I go?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Kim Lindley again, I'm from Manalapan. Teachers influence how a child thinks, and they shape and mold their minds. As a mom, and of two daughters, and teaching, my one second child had a lot of challenges through school. So at the end of the challenges, she didn't graduate high school, she got her GED, and I had a lot of challenges in the school, dealing with colleagues at a different school district. What I can't understand is that those teachers over there didn't see the same way I did. My child right now is assistant manager of a bank. So another thing that I want to bring up to your mind is, this policy is enabling children to change their identity when brain, the brain isn't fully developed. The Men's Mental Health Daily has an article, "At What Age Does the Brain Fully Develop?", which entails the ages and stages of brain development. A child's brain isn't fully developed until they're mid twenties and as late as thirty years old. This is extremely significant, because when, because children who are eighteen years of old are making legal decisions, considered an adult, and their brain isn't fully developed. If you have an adult child, you know that all their decisions aren't the best. Even though considered an adult by age, children still need parental input. The prefrontal cortex is an area of the brain which is responsible for attention, complex planning, decision-making, and impulse control, to name just a few. A major of the prefrontal cortex is not developed until the child is about the age of twenty. There are other areas of the brain which are part of the prefrontal cortex that I don't have time to mention. How can a five-year-old know they, what their identity is? Another thing is that teachers are going to be confronted with whether, about their faith, to call that child by that new gender. So there's a lot of things to consider with this policy, and I want to thank you for your time and efforts.
Thank you.
Hi again, Danielle Bruno Arlequin from Colonial, New Jersey, Millsex County resident. As an educator, I know that there's two things I'm not really supposed to discuss with my students. The first is who I voted for, because they don't need to know, and I tell them every day, that the, that the vote is private, so when they do grill me on it, I say, "Mm-mm, not, not, it's private, you're not supposed to know that." And two is my religion. However, last time I checked, we live in America. America is not a Christian nation. It is a nation of multiple religions, of multiple practices, of multiple people. We're a multitude. So it's really disconcerting to hear individuals who come to this podium and start talking about God. Because at the end of the day, what I believe doesn't really matter to these kids, what they believe matters to them. And I'm not going to go, just like I wouldn't go up to my Muslim students and tell them that they have to believe in God, we shouldn't be forcing policy based on religion into this doctrine. The science is clear, there's a separation of church and state for a reason. Finally, I can't even get my students to bring a dang pencil to school. How am I going to convince a child to change their gender? Just asking, because if you know how, maybe I could actually get pencils, and I won't have to spend all my own money buying these dang pencils. I'm just being honest. Because I swear they eat them, because they're, they're gone, they're just gone. So at the end of the day, we have to remember that though our faith may guide us in our decision-making, we have to separate our faith from our job as teachers, and we have to separate our faith from our policy. What you do in your house of God matters to you and matters to your God. But not everyone has the same God, and we can't force everybody to be strict to that doctrine. That is dogma at its worst, and we need to be more tolerant, much or less more accepting. At the end of the day, what I believe doesn't matter, as much as my Muslim student would like me to convert to Islam, he's trying really hard, he's almost getting me, but not quite. At the end of the day, what I believe is separate from my practice as a teacher, and people's beliefs in their God should be separate from policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Just keep it short. Keep it short, okay? No, no, no. I said, keep it short.
Gerald Magli, again, Dolores Turco Foundation. Just a very quick response regarding our constitutional right to freedom of speech and freedom of religion. There is, the separation of state and religion was, I believe, was Jefferson, so that the state could never interfere with the practice of religion. And just to let you know, with regard to the transgender policy, there are teachers who have religious beliefs, that it violates their religious belief to use pronouns that are, some of the children ask. And just to make you aware of lawsuits, freedom of religion is winning these lawsuits. If a teacher is fired for not following the pronouns of a child, that the, the, the bottom line of these cases is that they must be reinstated, and most of these cases are settled for hundreds of thousands of dollars. Freedom of religion in the United States of America and freedom of speech are extremely important freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Brett.
Brett Baker, Edison, New Jersey, again. I would, I would love to leverage ten years of being a political scientist to rebut that chaos, but I need, I need to actually rebut the, the very pervasive belief and talking points and straw man argument that there, that this is primarily happening in the, the moldable ages of the youth. I've heard alone tonight, members of the transgender and LGBTQ community speak, and I'm not entirely sure any of them said, "Hey, at five years old, I was considering this." And I just need to address that, because I just think it's a scary place to go, if I'm being honest. My son turns seven in two weeks, he paints his nails, he wears my daughter's high-heel toy shoes, he likes wearing her dress, he wears my niece's hand-me-down jeans, not because we're cheap, he just likes them. It's cool. I'm very aware that his mind is moldable, and I'm very welcoming if he goes there, but it's not happening. And, and to come, I, I, I'm sorry people are traveling so far, to come and just say such dishonest information, that this is happening at that age, it's, it's just wrong. And so as the parent of a child who is that age, of this district, stop it. Just stop it. If you want to talk about a teenager or an adult transitioning and having that debate, I live with the empathy that my friend spoke about. Live with that empathy and go there, but don't talk about children going through, like, it's not happening. And if you have sources, show them, but stop holding up these random straw man arguments that five-year-olds are going to their kindergarten teacher and talking about their identity. My son walked up to Mrs. Romeo at James Monroe Elementary School, and the first thing he said was, "I like the color of your shoes," and she said, "I like the color of your nails." And I'll be damned if that was not the best welcome I could get to this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, the red t-shirt, yeah.
Hi, I'm Cal Reinhardt again, I'm from North Brunswick, Stell. I wasn't really planning on speaking again, but then I heard one thing tonight that angered me and I had to speak. However, I hear that many of you are Christian, and many of my transgender siblings are also Christian, although I am not. So I wanted to share this beautiful quote with you, that I think really illustrates how these two, two things can coexist. And that is from a transgender person who, I don't have the original quote from, I'm sorry. "God blessed me by making me transsexual, for the same reason God made wheat but not bread and fruit but not wine, so that humanity might share in the art of creation." I hope that that helps some of you reconcile your feelings about this situation. But now I must taint the beauty of that quote with what I came up here to say, which is that if you look at a group of high school photos, and your main concern is whether or not they can reproduce, then the thing that we should be protecting them from seems like it's you, not trans people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, I'm Grayson, I'm from Metuchen, five minutes down the road. Thank you for sharing your perspective with us tonight, ma'am, and the woman behind you also doing work that, for you, is advocacy. I cannot blame you for experiences you haven't had. I am loved by God, I am loved by my community, and so are the kids who need the protection of, of this policy. I would love to share with you the joy I find in my community. The life that I live is not one that, that you have, the life that you live is not one that I have. Would love to swap stories sometime. We are all here because we care, and many people have shared that sentiment. I'd like to thank all of you lovely board members sitting here because you care, and that if you brought this policy back to the table, it was because you genuinely thought that it was worth your time. And I implore you to stop making kids think that they will have to continue to fight. This policy was passed under good faith, this policy has been upheld under good faith, and whether or not it is sustained again tonight, you have told the children of your district that you will threaten them. So when we talk about trust, and we talk about breaking trust, know that the act of this conversation has broken trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
She'll raise her hand first. Okay, I'll call her later. I'm not going to miss anyone, so as long as you raise your hand, I will not miss anyone. Yeah, 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 yeah.
My name is Camille Silva, I live in North Edison, I'm sure you missed me. Now, I was going to talk more on religion and child abuse, but those are dead horses that are now mincemeat on the ground. So I mainly going to talk about two things. One, being gay and trans is not like the cool new trend on the block. When people walk into school, they do not look in awe at the trans kids. No, you're still the weird one. Like, homophobia is not gone. If you sit down at lunch tables and just listen, you will hear people, mostly the guys, still like saying slurs, calling, "Oh, bro, you're gay, oh, mm." Like, homophobia is still here. Being trans is not cool, it's still like, "Oh, mm, uh." Second of all, the thing of, "Oh, this child is five years old, how's, how's this child know their gender?" They don't. That's why you got to let them explore, let them find out. If you keep that child locked in their one gender for the rest of their life, then they're going to have not a fun time doing that in adulthood. Let them do it when they're a kid, let them figure it out. Goodbye, I'm going to sleep.
Thank you. Late for, late for sleep, yeah. Okay.
Hi, once again, Kaya Raval, hopefully still a proud graduate of an Edison High School. Something I'd like to say about the people who have come from out of Edison to speak their Christian values at us, is that Edison is a very, very diverse town, and JP Stevens is, JP Stevens is eighty percent Asian, Edison High School is forty percent Asian. Many of my friends were not Christian, some of my friends were. Some of my friends were Catholic, a lot of my friends were Hindu, a lot of my friends were Muslim, a lot of my friends were Jewish. We all have had different gods, and we have all shared the same experiences of coming together at our schools and being accepted by our teachers, and being accepted by our friends. There has never been, in Hindu doctrine, if we're going to speak about religious doctrine. In India, there is a class of people called Hijras. They are people who exist outside of the gender spectrum. They've existed for thousands of years. If you go to a Hindu temple, there will be murals and statues of these people who partake in both gender identities. Of these people, our gods have changed gender, that's something that's Hindu doctrine. But I don't come here to impose Hindu doctrine on Edison school districts. I come here to acknowledge that a lot of kids in Edison might be Hindu. A lot of kids in Edison might be Muslim, or Christian, or Jewish as well. But the thing is that we don't all share the same God, and it's very, very hard to make that speech when you're not a part of this community that is Edison. Edison is a hundred thousand plus people, we are the sixth most populated township in New Jersey, and I am so grateful to live here every day. And one of the reasons that I was grateful to live here was the fact that I felt safe in Edison, and I felt accepted for every part of my identity, whether it was the fact that I wore a knee brace to every day of high school, because I still do, or whether it was the fact that I decided to start dying my own hair. Nobody ever really pushed back against me for exploring who I was, and coming to grips with what I was struggling with. There, if a teacher was ever against the idea of something I was doing, they had a logical reason for being against it, because it was written in their code of conduct as a teacher, it was written in whatever they signed when they became a teacher, to protect me. Sometimes as a kid, it doesn't feel like you're being protected, but what's happening here is, there's no kids that are saying that they're not being protected from gender ideology? They're open to learning about it, because the kids are there to learn, and then they can form their own opinions about it. So it's very, very difficult for me to see people coming to Edison and saying that they should be left out.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, see now, can I have a motion?
Motion to close the proper portion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So any board member, any comments?
Mr. Shig.
Yes, go ahead.
I've listened to a multitude of ideas. I believe that students and the parents, I believe about the education system, reading, writing, and arithmetic, that's what, that's where our curriculum is. And I don't want to keep parents out of it, but I want parents to understand that you're a parent, and you should know about your children. After all, they're growing up in your house. I have people standing up here, I have members of the board, that don't really remember that my job is to see that it runs well, to see that I have a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, and a BA, and a multitude of teachers. That's my job. But also, it's my job to, to protect the kids. Because if one kid, one, just one, has an issue, parents, you know about this, each and every one of you. Don't hang your head in shame. Hang your head high, because I know my students. I know my kids. I know my kids. I'm gonna stand here and vote no. I know it's not tonight, but I am voting no. Because to be perfectly honest, the parents know their kids. And if they're kids, it's their kids. Come on, man, think about it. It's their kids. They should know about their kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
I have some.
Yes.
These are just some thoughts that I have, okay? I support making changes to the current policy.
Jeanne, can you get closer to the microphone? Thank you.
I do this all the time, I'm sorry. But...
Please respect the other board members, please.
I'm sorry?
No, I'm just saying some others. Let you speak, they don't interrupt you. Yes.
I support making changes to this current policy. While it's not perfect, I believe the policy committee, where the board president should propose thoughtful revisions before we move to repeal this entirely. In my opinion, this policy should be repealed and replaced, not just eliminated. If the board determines that the existing policy no longer works, then it's our responsibility to provide a new one that gives teachers and administrators clear and consistent guidance. We serve 17,000 students across this district. No matter what school they attend, where they live, they deserve to be treated fairly and consistently. This decision doesn't need to be rushed. We could wait until the school year ends and use the summer to develop a stronger, more effective policy. That way, we avoid creating any gaps that could negatively impact our students. The message is simple. Repealing this policy without having a replacement is irresponsible. Our duty as a board is to create policies that support our schools, our students, our staff, you know, our taxpayers and everybody that's involved. These are just my opinions, and I've listened to every single one of you. This isn't the first time. I see you at many meetings. I listen. And this is just what I feel. I think, you know, if you asked me to vote right now, I would say right now, my vote is, you know, it's a no.
Thank you.
And I think that it's something that we need to address, and we need to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Yes, Chris.
Thank you, President Shi. I definitely don't want to rehash anything that was said, but I do want to bring something to the board's attention, which I take quite seriously. So I walked into the committee meeting on Monday with an agenda right here. And the agenda was to look at roughly 15 or so policies that were revised and a couple of new policies. And then in the end, there's something here, a little note with safety standards with electrical appliances and to think about that. And then when the meeting adjourned, where we're about to adjourn, Policy 5756 was brought up. My concern is, when I left that meeting, we had discussed that the revised policies and the new policies would be the policies that would be voted on. And that Policy 5756 would be a closed-room discussion. That didn't happen. That did not happen. I found that 5756 was included in all these policies with the word abolish around it. As the chair of the policy committee, that's insulting that I had to find out about it by looking at the webpage. No one told me it was on there. I found out by looking. Quite honestly, it's disgraceful. I'm sorry, public, that you have to hear this. I find it a huge disgrace. And quite honestly, it questioned. If I can't trust things coming out of my own committee will be accurate on the agenda, how can I trust anything, anything that's on this agenda, whether it's finance, whether it's personnel? How can I trust anything? Dr. Alderelli, I got a question for you. How did Policy 5756 end up on the agenda?
We had a discussion with the board president in relationship to placing it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments? So if you read the school board policy, the two person who controls the agenda is school board president and superintendent. We discussed this policy in a committee meeting, and we talked about abolishing it. If it's not on the agenda, how are we gonna abolish the policy? We said we're gonna have a closed-session discussion, which we did. And then, you know, this is what the result is. If it's not on the agenda, how I'm gonna abolish this policy? So with that said, do we have any other board member comments? Excuse me. You can make your comments after you have your opportunity. I'm done, okay? There's no back and forth. Please respect. Please respect the board. Please respect the board.
Folks, let's just continue with the next agenda item.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the policies?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
No.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Armando.
Absolutely no.
Ms. White.
No on 5756.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So now let's move on to... Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
We're not gonna have any more comments from the public, guys. That's not the way we run the meeting.
Okay. All right, so we allow for public comments for anything else. You wanted to come and talk? I'm sorry to keep you waiting.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Namaste Dwar. My name is Bhupin Kattilwal, and I live in Edison. Today, I am representing Hindu Education Foundation, which is a program of Hindu Swam Sevak Sangh. Hindu Swam Sevak Sangh USA, or HSS USA, is a 501(c)(3) voluntary, nonprofit, social, educational, and cultural organization. We have more than 250 weekly chapters nationwide. To honor the teaching community for their exemplary service in educating the students, the first week in May is considered as Teacher Appreciation Week. To celebrate this special occasion, we organize an annual event called Guru Vandana. Guru in Sanskrit means teacher, spiritual master, and mentor. And Vandana means salutation. Guru Vandana means reverence to the teacher. That is to say, it is an expression of love, gratitude, and reverence towards the teacher. Teachers play a critical role in educating and shaping our children into the future leaders of our country. These kind, patient, hard-working, dedicated, and understanding professionals help mold our children and guide them in positive directions. We entrust our children with teachers during the school year, and they play a pivotal role in their lives daily. A well-known adage from my culture says, Acharya Deva Bhava, which means teachers are next to God. Teachers are revered in our tradition. They occupy the highest position and role in the society. Hindu Education Foundation is working towards building the collaboration with teachers and students to enhance the understanding of Hindu culture. Along with Guru Vandana event, we have conducted yoga in Edison schools, which was attended by 700 students. Hindu Culture Workshop for 80 teachers in Wacheng Borough School District and Darshana Hindu Poster Exhibition, which was attended by 600 students. On behalf of Hindu Education Foundation HSS, I humbly bow and thanks all the wonderful teachers around. You are our superheroes. Thank you and namaste.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else, anything else that's really school-related? Go ahead, Matt.
Matt Revnack, ETA president. You know, I wish things would be done correctly because someone came up before and said you could only speak on Policy 5756. You never got a chance to bring up the one policy that was mentioned, and you just voted on it. So we never had an opportunity to speak on it before it was voted upon. And that was the one about the use of appliances, for example. Okay, and I understand most of them...
No, I said policies. No, I didn't say 5756 only. I said policies.
It was addressed to one person that started, and we said this is about 5756 only.
No.
Go back and watch the tape tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but anyway, in the policy about the appliances, one of the that is being outlawed basically is fans. We are in buildings that are not air-conditioned, other than one or two. When I was grievance chairman and vice president, I had people sending me room temperatures throughout the day. When it was 95 degrees in a classroom at 8:00 in the morning and 103 at noon time and 110 at 2:00 in the afternoon, if we can't use fans and we're being told we have to keep our classroom... Don't shake your head no. It is the truth, all right? And we're being told also, for safety reasons, you gotta keep your classroom doors closed. I was in a room that had two less windows because I was on a corner. It's not conducive to learning. It's not conducive to teaching. Why are we not allowing fans? I can understand certain things like, yeah, you shouldn't have a coffee maker in a classroom or you shouldn't have a space heater perhaps, but a fan? If we don't have air conditioning, then put ceiling fans up in each classroom with something to circulate the air at least. So I hope you'll take a look at that again because by voting yes on that, you just said it cannot happen. It doesn't even give the superintendent or building principal the opportunity to say, "Guess what? I understand it's 100 degrees in that room. At least you could turn on a fan to circulate the air." Second point, in terms of Mr. Lugo, I agree. I'm the president of the union. I set the agenda for my meetings. But I never do anything without asking for my committee reports and talking to my committee chairs first if there's something I want to add. If that is disrespectful, then what do you have committee chairs for? What do you have committees for? You're not gonna listen to what they tell you or suggest to you. Yeah, you can, all you want. Number three, I didn't get up to rebut, but I'll say it now. One of the things that was insinuated that it was a mandate because you were elected with 17,000 votes. That's basically what the vote total was. 17,000 votes out of 60,000 registered voters. It's not a mandate. And I would guarantee that 17,000 people did not vote just because of this policy. In fact, they probably voted because you promised them another zero budget. Well, that's another one. So to make that and say that's a mandate, bullcrap. In fact, I asked somebody on the board today, where is the stats and the data to support? If 75% or 65% of the Edison voters and residents on this particular issue said it, hey, that's a mandate. But even in the election, 17,000 out of 60,000 voters, that's less than 33%. That's not a mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to address the fact?
So Mr. Shi asked me to address the policy piece with the fans. They are the personal use of fans, so fans that staff members would bring in. Part of the conversation would be that the board would provide classrooms with fans upon the request of teachers, especially on those hot days. So we are now gonna purchase one. We have a hand in the back. And Mr. Toth will assure of those pieces, so.
So, yeah, we did discuss this. And the policy is preventing you bring personal small electronics. If the school provides you, that's fine. I don't want you to bring your own personal thing from your home. So Brett.
Brett Baker, Edison, New Jersey. I'm, I stand floored at what I experienced over the last three and a half hours. I watched the teachers' union overwhelmingly disagree with repealing 5756. I watched this room overwhelmingly disagree with repealing 5756. For the most important statistic, I watched Edison residents in this room overwhelmingly disagree with repealing 5756. And I just watched nine people just not care. And I'm just not sure what I did with three and a half hours of my life. You seem to have come in with your preconceived notion. You seem like you came in knowing. I made a campaign promise. This is what I've gotta deliver on. And I'll just ask, I'll ask the question that nobody's asking because I respect the man that I'm about to ask this question to. Through the chair, Dr. Alderelli, you were encouraged by the chair to clarify the district's position on personal electronics. And with the utmost respect, Dr. Alderelli, I would like to ask your thoughts on the repeal of 5756. Thank you.
Well, we'll address that at the end. So any other board member? Yeah, Mrs. Conway. He will address your question. Yes, Mrs. Conway.
Should I start or are you going to answer? Let Dr. Alderelli speak, Mr. Shi.
He will answer questions at the end. So speak.
At the end of what?
Or the public comments. I'm the presiding, I'm presiding the meeting, so.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. I was appalled by eight of you. One person actually came up with an idea. And the rest of you, except for the people that voted no, became the number-one bobbleheads. You were told what to do, and you did it. And if this is what your board has come to become, why bother coming? If you're just being told what to do, that means you really didn't take your election seriously. I thank you, Mrs. White, for saying what you said because I was very pleased that you had an alternative item. And that made sense. But what you've decided to do makes no sense. It's only going to hurt you unless you take her advice. But by this vote tonight, obviously, you have no intentions of taking her advice, and that's sad. And the other thing is the fans. No offense, as a teacher, I never bought a fan at all. But at back-to-school night, when the parents came, I had at least four. So I guess that rule doesn't count. We didn't buy them. Are you gonna stop the parents, Mr. Shi? I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Talke, 15 Midwood Avenue. Just need to be educated on this if you guys can answer my questions. So tonight was like the first reading where you abolished this policy. Number one, I believe, it still is state law, correct? So, okay, well, that's my number one question. So, okay, well, that's my number-one question. So, if we're not following the state law, what repercussions does that have on our board and our students if something should happen? And is anything being thought of or drafted to replace this and protect your educators in the schools if something should happen because we're not following the state laws? That's just my questions because I don't know, so if you can explain that to me, I'd appreciate it, moving forward.
So, what I can tell you is that there are numerous policies that are required policies that the district has currently that provide the required protections under state law. So that will continue. As far as an alternative plan, you know, that's up to the board whether or not they come up with an alternative plan.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, someone over here in the back?
Hi.
They raised their hand first.
Did you say anything?
Okay, no, you gave me the body language.
Oh, wow, I didn't know you were a body language expert, Mr. Shi. Regardless, Edison gets $91 million of state aid for our schools. I understand we're a very high-earning district, but one thing I've always wondered is, if the board members could just answer my question by raising their hands, how many of you live in North Edison? Oh, somehow I know that not all of you live in South Edison, so I was just wondering, unless you guys aren't allowed to answer, I'll go look up your addresses myself. But as a resident of South Edison, I've always been a little concerned by the lack of representation for the South side on our board because South Edison is the only place where we have six Title I-funded schools. So six of our schools are, six schools in Edison as a district are funded by supplementary Title I funding because we're not as, we're not as socio-economically lucky as North Edison. So I'm a proud graduate of Title I schools. I'm happy to say that. But it is very concerning to me that there is very little representation for South Edison on this board, and the problems that face South Edison specifically, I'm not going to bring up anything else about policy 5756 because frankly, I think we've seen what's happened. You're all of one mind, you're all of the same opinions, and I think some of that stems from the fact that you all live in the same place and you don't see the same kids that us in South Edison do. Because if you go on any of the school-ranking demographic sites, JP Stevens is 80% Asian demographic, gets them a 32% diversity ranking, whereas Edison's 40% Asian gives us a 70% diversity ranking. So I think you guys just need to come over to the South side a little more. And obviously, we appreciate, like, you know, the renovation of the Edison High School auditorium and whatnot because the last time I came to a Board of Education meeting, it was because nobody on the board told us that our auditorium was getting renovated my senior year of high school. There was never any communication from the board until we found out that we weren't allowed to cross through backstage because of asbestos. So we kind of have been at the mercy of a board. But back then, when I went to that meeting, many of the people who are on this board weren't on it now. So they told us exactly what had happened there. They said, okay, you should have talked to your principal. I said, all right, thank you. They gave us a spot to do our senior recitals. What I'm seeing here tonight is that nobody here has gotten any answers, and nobody here has gotten any solutions either than what Mrs. White proposed earlier. So I'm just really disappointed to see that this is the state of the district that I call home because I really love living in Edison, and I, like I said, I'm giving my money to the Board of Education to rent out the Edison's brand-new auditorium, and I just want to make sure that it's all being used correctly. Thank you.
Dorlins.
Thank you.
You're both South End people.
Excuse me, excuse me.
EHS.
She was just answering the question.
EHS.
No, yeah, just ask me so they can answer. So I put them on to answer. She did. Okay. So I can answer the question. We have five board members from the North Edison, four board members from South Edison. Unfortunately, the board is nine, so you can't do a 5-5. Five from North, and because the total of nine board members, so I don't know how much more representation you're talking about. Yes, Joe.
Joe Romano, Edison Township, a member of the South Edison side. I do have, it's not gonna be a question. I flew in from Jacksonville, Florida, last week, and on the plane, the stewardesses, they actually had, they walked up and down the aisles, and they said because our trip went over water, that our, they had life vests under the seat. Well, what am I talking about? A while ago, we started to renovate the auditorium at JP Stevens. We, we took the stage out, and they dug a 25-foot pit behind it to take and to upgrade the pumping systems, you know, pump the water out because it's kind of low-lying, the school. So while they were doing that, there was some rain, and, no, not for nothing, water got into where they were fixing. So, you know, that's, I understand that. When was it, Monday or Tuesday? Did we, did the auditorium that we were gonna use, was there water intrusion into that? Don't answer, because I don't want this back and forth. So, if there was water intrusion and we couldn't have the meeting at JP Stevens, okay. We took and we renovated the auditorium, and when the engineers figured out that there was a problem with the ceiling, and it cost $275,000 to get the asbestos taken out, didn't anybody figure out that the water level? And the question that I have is, is because we had a custodian staff that was there doing their jobs, that custodian staff pitched in and got the water that was intruding in the brand-new, renovated auditorium that we can't use? So I'm asking, are our students at JP Stevens, are they gonna be getting life vests? Are they gonna be, is there gonna be, is there gonna be boats hanging on the wall? In case of what? How about if it rains? Do we have, do we have the option to close school for the day? All I ask is that accountability. We spent, and I don't know the exact number because, you know, I'm a truck driver. I want to know how much money we spent. How come they didn't find out that there was asbestos in the ceiling? How come there was water in the auditorium? And then, when they finally got the water out, they did what they had to do, and it flooded out again? I'm sorry, I'm just a dumb truck driver. I don't even want to know the answers, but the people, the taxpayers, the zero-tax people, they should know that, I don't know, but maybe we should send our kids to JP Stevens with galoshes, raincoats, and life vests. Joe Romano, from Edison Township, South Edison. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to talk about the flooding? Yeah. John, you want to pitch in? Go ahead.
Yep. All right, so for any, anyone that doesn't know, I'm pretty sure everyone does, it rained pretty hard yesterday, right? The JP auditorium has been under construction, and it did take on water. After talking to our facility staff along with architect and contractors, there's nothing wrong with the new pumps that have been put in. The pumps did not fail. We feel that there is, or I should say, the architect and his team of professionals feel that there is an issue with the water retention basin that lies beyond the parking lot. That, you know, when all the water runs off and the pumps work and they go to pump out, well, that's all great, but, and they're pumping into the same retention basin. For the amount of water that came down yesterday, it wasn't enough to hold all of that capacity. So we will be having the architects, along with their team, come out and look at this retention area and possibly re-civil engineer that spot.
Thanks. Who's gonna pay for it? Is there, is there something called errors and omissions? That seems to be maybe a little error. It seems to maybe, not for nothing. The zero-tax people, you know them? The zero-tax people? They should be aware of the pool that we have. Do we have a swim team? Maybe we get the swim team in the auditorium.
Out of your line, Mr. Romano. Okay? So, yeah, now we start answering questions. Dr. Alderelli, you want to answer Brett Baker's question?
Yeah, yeah. In relationship to, listen, in the event of any policy being abolished, right, for first, right after its second reading, in the absence of policy, I'll have to follow law. We'll have to look at existing policies that address discrimination. And first and foremost, I mean, the other piece too, and I think I speak on behalf of the staff and everybody here, we do what's in the best interest of kids all the time. So that's, that's, at the end, at the end of our statement right there, that's exactly what we would have to do, is that we have a really talented staff, we have a great administrative team, we'll follow the law, we'll look at guidance and existing policies as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
I want to clarify, 56, 57 was voted.
Go to the podium. It's first reading. Two readings, two readings.
Anthony Mar, Edison, I didn't follow all the votes. It was a 5-4 vote to abolish 5756.
Six-three.
Six-three. Thank you.
Thank you.
But that was only the first reading.
It's the first reading. Yeah, David?
I just want to address to some of the people who is, you know, opposing the abolish of this policy, David, Edison. I mean, this is the first time I'm in such a kind of meeting, hearing so many, so much negative against the parents. Why I'm sitting here, I'm thinking like, you know, as a parent loving my kids, I think I'm like, you know, a kind of being depicted as a kind of very bad person, harm to my kids. I think today's discussion, the fundamental, is that whether to get parents involved in this kind of decision. In whatever, like academics, school, other policy, we are already involve the parents. So abolish this one is consistent to engage the parents. But on the other hand, I want to just like, you know, express my feeling is that, you know, as a parent, we're always trying to say, you know, engage the kids, to trust the school, trust the teacher. I mean, the other way is regarding one of the previous board members saying, you know, whether the board has, you know, mandated by the Edison residents. I believe if you put a, just an individual vote item, whether the school should like abolish this one, I think the margin of difference should be even much larger. Okay? So finally, I want to say that we all know, parents and schoolteachers, we are all on the same line to protect the kids, to educate the kids. I mean, only all three working together, we can get a better future for the kids. And just one example, right? For example, this is like maybe one thing. If you have a, like, say for example, child of like, you know, age of 10, if you, they have to do some, say, make their own decision for physical surgery, something like that, two years later, she's going to regret. To me, as a parent, for the rest of our life, it's going to be a ruin to our family. To some of you thinking that parents is not like, is abusive, it's maybe just a, like, you know, failed case for you. To a lot of the parents, it's a ruin to the family for their rest of the life, in case it's not the real decision by the kids. Okay? I just want to say that, you know, in such kind of discussion, we should treat the parents, teachers, everyone as like, you know, trustworthy. The intention is to protect the kids, and for such kind of, you know, discussion, you should like, you know, should not say, parents is so negative. There may be some, very few parents, but most of the parents, they do love their kids. They want them to, you know, I mean, have a better future, grow healthy. Same thing for us, you know, like, for whatever the school, teach, you know, teachers, schools, majority of them, their purpose is try to make the kids a better, a better future. So in such kind of discussion, we cannot use like very few cases to make it like, make it broader. So just hope that in the future, you know, parents, teachers, schools, we should all involved, have a, you know, to better educate our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, well, you, did you first? Yeah, Kyle, you can do a second time. Yes, I, I know, I saw it, so go ahead.
Hello, Alex Cuska, Edison, New Jersey. I wanted to appreciate, where did the person who just spoke went?
It was there.
I wanted to appreciate a few things that you just said, that you care a lot about your children.
You addressed the, not him directly.
Okay. So I understand that for most parents, and especially parents that are here, these are parents that care a lot about their children, right? And these are parents who, if their kids came to them with a decision like this about their gender identity, they would be accepting of it. And that is, we have talked about it, that is not the case for all people. And I think the argument that was being made, that we need to just kind of ignore the bad ones, is sort of what I got from that, cannot happen at all. Another comment that was made about an eight-year-old getting surgery, gender-affirming surgery, what are we talking about here? That's not even in the question ever from a medical, ethical standpoint. Why are we bringing that up? We should be talking about what is happening in schools, and we should not be putting it on the district or putting it on teachers to be that communication between parents and students about things like their gender identity. If you have a home environment, and you're worrying about this as a parent, a home environment that is conducive to that, that is conducive to conversations between you and your children, then that is something that you fostered. If you have a home environment that is not conducive to that, and an environment where your child believes that they could be at harm if they came out to you, then there should be a policy in place to protect them, right? And I understand that as a parent who would never in a million years think that, oh, my child, like, would think that my child should be able to come to me and the teacher should be able to tell me, I understand that it's frustrating, that you want to be able to bridge that gap, but that is a gap that can be bridged at home. And that is not something that needs to be mandated for teachers to report back to the parents about. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm gonna call- I'm gonna call every single one of you. No, I did not pick you. I pointed at the lady in the back. There's a lady, there's someone sitting behind you.
Yeah, Edison Residence.
Unnecessary conversation, you're gonna be called, okay?
Edison Residence, one-two-nine Oakwood Avenue. I just heard everybody saying, and express yourself, appreciate it. And I think we came here today all wants to protect our kids, right? From different aspect. But as a parent, I think, you know, we are the number one teacher, you know, in the household. So our parents has a, you know, definitely rights and also privilege to teach our kids. Now, school is a second, well, I said the school is important to give them academic, you know, education, but parents is very important. How come, you know, you came like fifty-seven, fifty-six, or whatever the policy number, to leave the parents out, you know, and what, what's going on? You don't tell the parents, leave the parents out? I think that's totally wrong. Yeah, well, definitely there are some, you know, parents, you know, I agree, maybe irresponsible, or they don't know how to be a parents. But I think most of the parents, they care their kids, right? Just like my example, if my daughter, ten years ago, if, you know, I just fast forward, if my, my daughter is right now in current environment, well, she said she want to be a boy. And the school didn't tell me, oh, you, you don't have to tell parents, right? I just shared my daughter's story, right? She said she want to be a boy, like, like her brother. I said, no, you cannot change it because God made you a girl. You cannot change it, right? And I don't want another boy, that's why they told her, right? And now she became a beautiful lady. She still like a playboy, you know, some boy, you know, sports or whatever. But she, she enjoy it, right? Her identity. I think some kids just confused. And in school, now, if you're grown up, eighteen years above, you made decision you want to change your identity, well, that's your choice. But why so young age, starting with kindergarten? You told them you can change your identity, confuse them. I think that's wrong. As an educator, no matter how, what the kids, you know, came to, the first thing, oh, you don't tell them, oh, yeah, you have your freedom, you can do whatever you wanted, you have your choice. I think that's wrong. They're not mature enough. My son is already eighteen. I don't, I still don't think he's mature enough yet. I still need to give him some advice. So I totally don't agree, why you leave parents out of this? I believe there are some bad parents, but if they're bad, I think school can intervene, right? No problem, but you cannot take out the parents' right. They changed their name at the school. I heard some teacher said, oh, now it's so messed up because the kids, yesterday was Jenny, now today is Michael. Right? The school record is all totally messed up. They don't like it, but how, how you address this? Right? I know, you know, the student has the rights to do, but they're not mature enough yet. How can you take out the parent parental rights from them? Let them do the decision. Yeah, of course, we need to inclusive, right? But they are not mature enough yet. If you give them the right guidance, they probably don't want to be a Michael or Jenny, or don't want, you know, do only twelve. They want to do, use the, you know, use blocker and change their sex, cut their breast, a penis? Penis, right, right? That's totally wrong. So how a parent's school allow that happen? For them, you need to get, as a school educator, we should give them the right guidance. Not wrong information, they can do whatever they wanted. They're too young. They are so young. So as the parents, we have a responsibility to give them the right guidance. Not the freedom, they think they can do whatever they wanted. They probably not mature enough yet. So I totally disagree, this one, fifty-seven, whatever the policy. Take out parents', you know, rights, to give them their kids' guidance. So how can I trust the school, the teachers, right? Even you love the students very much, but probably you gave them a wrong value, wrong advice. It could, it could ruin their life. Do you know how many kids regret, you know, when they grew up? They did some certain surgery, changed their body. They cannot go back, their life.
Excuse me.
Let, let the speaker finish speaking during her time.
You can do the research, you can say.
You, you don't, you don't address them, address here.
When they grow up, one day they're gonna regret it. Can fake penis and, you know, he cut their breasts, make you a real man or woman? Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much. Yes.
So I, I just want to clarify, this policy isn't taking away rights from parents. This policy isn't saying that you cannot be a parent. This policy just allows the freedom for children who are, don't feel safe at home. And honestly, from the last person that spoke, doesn't feel like that's a nurturing environment. Your child came to you at a young age, confused and scared, and you said, you're not confused.
They're looking this way.
I'm sorry. Saying that you're confused and then just sit here spouting, just, I felt like you were just making stuff up at this point, but there were twenty-seven studies, one of which Harvard was included in there, where less than one percent of transgender people post-surgery regret their decision. Less than one percent. I heard, I heard someone cite a study, well, they didn't even cite it. They, they said ninety-six percent of transgender people regret their decision. There's, there's at least five people here, right? Like, it's wild. But just coming back, back here, this is truly just looking out for the safety of the children. When there's a, there's a difference between looking out for your child and control. And when you really feel like you're losing control and you don't know what's going on with your child, that's a problem between you and your child. If you have a nurturing and trusting and loving and growing environment in that household, you have nothing to worry about. This doesn't concern you. But if, if you really feel like you don't have control of your household, you really feel like this kid's rebelling against you and you don't get it, you don't understand, and you're not willing to learn, then I could see why you want to oppose this. I could see why the freedom scares you. But really, if you're just being there for them, listening to them, doing actual research, and, and be, doing that, your child has the right for you to be that person, that intellectual person that they look up to, that person that they want to grow up to be. But then if they come up to you genuinely confused and scared, and you're saying, no, you don't know what you're talking about, you're confused? You know what kind of damage that does to a child? The lot of trust that gets ripped away from them when they're just, oh, I guess, I'm just, none, none of my feelings are validated. I can't come to you because you're just gonna tell me that I'm, I'm confused and scared. So I, I really hope you reconsider this. I know you had a bunch of people yelling at you for the past three, three and a half hours, but we're all passionate, we care. I know you guys are human too. So I'm sorry, I got a little heated at you too.
No, no, no need to be sorry.
But like I said before, we want to think with empathy. We want to think for the future of these kids. Just because you feel uncomfortable with things that are coming to you that you, you're not sure about, that's okay, that's human. But it's up to you as a person, as a person that they look up to, to try to have that open mind and, and be that person, be a little uncomfortable for a little while and grow for that, for your child. Because doing that little work is gonna work dividends in the future. And they're gonna be, grow up great people. And that's it.
Thank you very much. You don't need to be sorry, we got to pay the big bucks to do this, alright? Okay, Ben. She's the first, she, oh, you're the second? Okay, alright, the first time, I'm sorry. No, no. You, you, you raised your hand? Oh, you did the first, okay. Anybody in the back that, that the first timer, for the public comments? Okay, alright, now you can go, I'm sorry. I, I lost count, I'm lost count.
It's getting late, I know.
That's alright, that's alright. That's, again, we got to pay the big bucks for it.
Okay. I know, we're not supposed to have a back and forth, but can I ask the attorney something? Because then it will guide the rest. Just, is policy, is this policy, I can't even remember the name.
Five-seven-five-six.
Five-seven-five-six. Is it a state law or a guided policy?
It's a guided policy.
No, 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 let her finish, let her finish.
No, and I was, and being that this has been a heated discussion and taken up many hours, days, months of our board meetings for this. And we do have a huge district. In the past, when there was things that we did not like that were done by the state, whether it was, you know, short funding and stuff, we had members of our board, because we are such a big district, going, reaching out to lawmakers in our state, going to Trenton, making phone calls to see if this policy could be revised on a state level so that we don't have to keep going back and forth and addressing it. Because we've got a lot of stuff going in our schools, we are a big district. And sitting here again for four hours and you guys giving all your time for this, there's a lot going on in our schools that I feel like we're not addressing for running our schools on the day-to-day operations because we're spending so much time on this, which is more people's values, you're either on this side or that side. And we're not trying to come up with a compromise. And it's, you know, it's spending a lot of your time and it's like, these people against these people, instead of coming together, like, to find a solution or, you know, something that will kind of appease both sides.
Can I, I would just want to clarify something.
No, no, let her finish, then you address.
No, you can clarify, but do you understand what I'm saying?
Are you done? Are you finished?
Yeah, but do you understand what I'm saying?
I don't want a back and forth.
Okay, yeah, I don't want it back and forth. But this has been heated going on for years, that we've been discussing going back and forth. And it depends on the climate of what's going on, I'm gonna say politically. I don't know what's right or wrong with it, but I think everybody on the board should get together to come up with some kind of compromise or something to protect our educators and stuff, if this is a policy that we are to follow. And if we're so against it, as some people have been, have we reached out to the state to try to, you know, we, we are a big name, we are, you know, a high-performing school district, to bring this to our state legislators and law, you know, lawmakers, to see if it can be revised? That's it, thank you.
Yeah, I know, you have seen it. Just to clarify, the policy fifty-seven, fifty-six is based off of DOE guidance. And that's what was used in the creation of the policy. So it is policy, it is board policy, which is not the same thing as statutory state law.
Thank you. Any other first timers, before I call the second timer? Yes.
Hi, I've been sitting here, Celeste.
Get closer.
Oh, you want me closer?
Yes, there you go.
Is this close enough? Or is this, this is good? Okay, just want to make sure.
It's not for me, it's for the people on the line.
Okay, but you're, got it, you're, you're completely in control, don't, I am, I am very aware of that. My name is Celeste Fiori, I am from Piscataway, I'm an attorney, I'm non-binary, I'm transgender. I spent another four hours in your wonderful town, I was back, I was here in October of twenty-twenty-four. And it feels like a déjà vu, but, but now I know that there has actually been appellate decisions that have said to school districts who are doing this exact same thing. And the appellate court has said, you have to have a policy and you have to follow the law. So you just heard, heard your board attorney say to you that this is a policy that follows the law. And I'm gonna actually quote one of your board members from October, the, I think you're just a lowly trucker. I'm sorry, can you hear me? Okay. You're just a lowly trucker, but you said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. If it's not broken, don't mess with it. So I'm curious, as an outside observer and an attorney, why, at this point in time, this board would decide to expose itself to more, to a lawsuit from the state? And of course, I'm not threatening, I don't work for them. But why would you do that? There, there were amicus on the other side, the ACLU, unless somebody's taking money. Unless some money is coming into your campaign, or, and I've said this before, I don't know if you're getting weird legal advice, maybe you need to spend another twenty-five thousand dollars or consider where you're getting legal advice from. But Mr. Board President, why are you thinking that you want to repeal or direct your board to repeal a policy that is going to invite lawsuits? Is that, I don't believe that sixteen or seventeen thousand people elected you to bring lawsuits on your district. It doesn't make any sense. So if something's not broke, why are you trying to fix it? Because I, I'll, I'll answer my own question. It's not broke, we are not political pawns. And I, I, I really, really want you all to maybe listen to the, I'm gonna, I, I don't know your attorney. And I'm not going to address your attorney because I'm addressing the board president, but I do hope you're taking advice from them and thinking about the level of risk that you are continuously exposing yourselves to. And I don't know if you're, if this is some sort of, you know, wow, I had six minutes to do this. It was good, I, I'm glad that I waited until the end. But I don't understand why, after now eight hours in the last six months, and perhaps you didn't watch, I don't believe you were in the room. Maybe you didn't watch the YouTube video, because it's almost six hours long. But for those of you that were there, why are you doing this again? Is it because there are new people who are telling you that this is something to do? But again, it baffles me that if you've got construction projects that you're trying to fund, that maybe some professionals, boy, maybe some professionals, maybe the architect thinks that the water retention system is some sort of something, but you've spent so much time and human energy and human passion on this. And yet there's literally no legal or factual basis on which to do this, other than to expose yourself to a lawsuit. So if you got elected to play fun and games and to pay lawyers and to engage in litigation, then maybe you're doing what you believe you have a mandate to do. But I really hope that people are watching this, and maybe somebody will take a clip from this, and maybe somebody will do a little bit of digging and ask themselves, why, if now there's been, and now it's not a published appellate decision, but now an appeal, the, the appeal was ruled on in the consolidated cases, why, 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 why? Like, I, I want to ask that with so many, in so many different languages, why you would all vote for that? I do not understand, I, I seriously question your judgment. I don't know about your integrity, I don't know you all, but I question your judgment because it makes no sense. And so I hope that the voters, oh, I still have two more minutes to keep saying this. But I hope that the people that voted for you, that have your phone numbers, that can call, that are gonna call you and say, why are you doing this? Do you want to put us in the news? Like, is this, is it a publicity stunt? Is it, is it about, I mean, I, I think there's definitely some control. And I think a, a few people have noted the immense need for control here. And I, and I think that that's indicative, maybe of something larger, but I, I hope that you have the respect and deference to other professionals when they, when, and I hope that they are telling you, wow, this is an incredibly, it's actually, it's not even risky. It's almost, it's not even Icarus flying too close to the sun. It's literally a crash collision course for, for absolutely no return. Because your board attorney is gonna tell you, and your superintendent's gonna tell you, that all of the things in that policy are, are already provided for, for kids under the law. So why would you rescind something that has no, there's no reason to rescind it because your people are still gonna have to actually effectuate a policy that you've then abolished? That, I think that's absurd. That's actually, I think, an exercise in just complete absurdity. So I'm glad that I'm here with you, and I wish that I could really take us, I wish I could take us into the next day, but we only have, we have eighteen more minutes until that happens. Yeah, it's been fun to be here with you all, and I do, really do not want to have to come back here again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other first timers? Any other first timers? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
So I could help you with that question, because when I was on the board, the attorneys told us to stay far away from us and not do it. And we paid them a lot of money to do it, and we spoke to, I think Bureau talked to, what, six different attorneys, John, that we had to pay? Roasting up to $25,000, so we did seek attorney's devices, and they told us to stay away from it. But Dr. Eldorelli, because I got complete confidence in you, and I hate always addressing you, but I know last time when they repealed this policy, you know, it's the judgment of the superintendent, he's the one that runs the schools, and you said, "You know what? I'm still going to follow the policy, because it's my judgment and I'm going to protect kids." So my question to you is, even when this is repealed, are you still going to follow the policy? Thank you.
He already answered, you want to say it one more time?
In the absence of policy, what I will have to do is follow law, existing policy that relates to discrimination, as well as any guidance from counsel and the DOE.
So I just want to add, the board is here to define policies for the school district. Superintendent doesn't define policies, you know that. Thank you very much.
That's the whole question I asked, I asked him if he's going to follow.
Excuse me, he already answered it, okay? So, yeah, in the back, next to Brett, Brett.
Good evening, and I don't think I'll use my full six, but I actually want to-
Feel free.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just checking, okay. Lisa Taylor, Piscataway, but an active member of the middlesex community, the broader New Jersey community, and since I was in fourth grade tutoring third graders, have always had a concern for education, and have served in the beginning of my career as a public school teacher, as well as a private school teacher, so that's context. Through the chair, I would actually like to ask the superintendent a more specific question, in light of his professional experience and expertise as an educator and an educational leader. I know that in other districts where this has been debated, without being asked, the superintendent has spoken on this point, so respectfully, Board President, I would like the superintendent to answer the question of, what is his professional view on the value of the existing policy? Because I know people have asked the question, when rescinded, but that vote hasn't happened yet, and I would hope that the board members continue to think between now and the second reading, about what their vote will be then, and I think that the community benefits from the superintendent's professional view, based on all of his years of experience, and it's with respect that I ask that question through you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
You can feel free to sit down.
The purpose of policy is to guide, is to guide staff, is to guide myself, it's to guide the way that we currently operate, right? So, and again, through the chair, if I don't answer the question, it's entirely, maybe I'll repeat it. But in the absence of that, professionally, what I will have to do is utilize the tools that are accessible to me, right? And that's experience, and that's doing things that are in the best interest of kids, based on a case-by-case basis also, right? I mean, as an educator, there are different ways to handle different situations, especially when it comes to kids, especially when it comes to families, right? So in the absence of policy, law, and it is left up to my discretion in a certain case, to be honest with you, but I will have to follow law, I will have to follow existing policy that addresses specifically discrimination. And in the absence of that, we're going to have to give staff a clear-cut understanding of how to, how to make sure that, you know, our kids are safe, right? And I think I speak for everybody in this room, and as I said before, that's what we want to do. I don't know if that answered it in its entirety.
That's fine, so next, please.
It's a quarter to 12, I'm at the 5:00 AM club, so my brain's a little-
I understand, I realize that the clock didn't even run on me.
Excuse me, you already have your time, so you can come back later.
Did it run to six? I don't think it started to run.
No, no, there's no back and forth, once you ask to finish your question, we answer it, and you can come back later.
Oh, I understand.
Okay, that's a procedure, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, any first timers before I call the second? You went before?
Three minutes.
You want, you want to speak?
No, I did not.
Okay, because you want, I didn't know if you raised your hand. Okay, I don't want to miss anyone, yes, you go ahead.
So I'd like to rebut something from a little bit before regarding parents, and how some of us feel about this policy and how we feel about our parents. Like I said, I'm here with my dad, my dad drove me here, my dad loves me a lot, but my dad hasn't always understood me, mostly because I'm very loud and very annoying, and he's, he wants me to go to business school, and I said, "No, I want to go study political science," and after a while, he accepted that. But again, not every dad is like my dad, and not every parent is like some of the parents in this room. From New Jersey Government's 2023 Domestic Violence Statistical Summary, there were 70,828 domestic violence incidents reported by the police in 2023, which was a 5% increase from 2022. Unfortunately, 2024's data is not up on the New Jersey Gov. website yet. Moving on, children were actively involved or present during 16,858 incidents, or 24% of all domestic violence incidents occurring in 2023. This is not to say that all of these had to do with queer children, or trans children, or anything at all to do with policy 57, 56. It is just a statement on the fact that not every parent is as caring as the ones in here today. Additionally, just to bring real statistics to the satisfaction rates of children who, children as well as anybody who gets transitional surgery, from NPR, only 4% of participants, which was nine kids out of 220, from a study done by JAMA Pediatrics, which looked specifically into trans teenagers pursuing medical interventions, like puberty blockers and hormones. Teenagers cannot get surgeries without parental consent, that's not a thing that's happening when we're talking about children and teenagers getting medical aspects of their transition, it is usually hormonal blockers, it is puberty blockers and hormones. Out of these 220 families that were surveyed, only 4% of participants, which was, again, nine out of 220, expressed regret with any aspect of their care, and when researchers were asked more about these regrets, what they said was, they wished they hadn't done blockers and they'd gone straight to hormones, or maybe they had a negative side effect related to the blockers. And these regrets are not the same as regretting transitioning at all. So I heard a 96% regret statistic, I think that this is, that 4% being misinterpreted, and I just wanted to have that on the record for the YouTube video, to ensure that all of the statistics are being provided for. And once again, this is a report by NPR from JAMA Pediatrics, and the domestic violence statistics I cited were from NJ.gov. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, go ahead. You're next. No, no, Brett Baker is next. You didn't raise your hand? Oh, okay.
Gerald Macleod again, Dolores Turco Foundation, just wanted to clarify a couple things. Thing number one, 85% of children who have gender dysphoria will come to grips with their biological sex by the time they're in their early twenties. That's absolute standard research. Well, I appreciate the information, I-
You didn't have to talk to me.
Okay, yes, well, I appreciate your information, and the fact that, you know, your students here do research and do look up. I do want to point out that these studies do show, and these are ones that go to the insurance companies, the number of transgender that have, had clinical treatments that desist, means they discontinue and do not continue those treatments, that started between 15 and 19, 72.7% desist, that means they stop, that means they change their mind and do not continue on the transgender. So that's through insurance company statistics. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention, there was a couple things mentioned about children with transgender, I just want to point out, the new standards, the sex health, 2020 health and physical education standards require that by second grade, students are introduced to gender identity. So in second grade, they're told that, you know, they may not be their biological sex, but by fifth grade, they're introduced to the fact that they can take puberty blockers to stop their normal development. So those things are part of the curriculum, if you wanted to take a look at the 2020 curriculum, just wanted to clarify those couple things.
Thank you very much, okay. Brett.
A handful of things to rebut in my life right now. Brett Baker, Edison, New Jersey. My friend from Neptune, I would, through the chair, we're giving a lot of credit to the New Jersey Department of Education for writing really specific standards that just flat-out don't exist, I'm sorry, I've read them, I've run elementary schools, what you cited is factually incorrect. The, you know, the proudest moment of my life, prior to getting married and having children, was getting accepted into a teaching program that brought me out to New Jersey. Jerry, you know this story well, Ralph, you know this story well, as well. The second proudest moment was in 2010, when I opened and founded my own school, and so I can empathize with Dr. Eldorelli's moment right now, it is 11:54 PM. I know the man gets up early, I regret to inform you, I get up earlier. And here's, and I just want to walk the YouTube public through this, and those of us who are still awake here, through what's going to happen in Dr. Eldorelli's world for the next six hours. The man's got to figure out how to answer the following question that I got from a teacher today, who said a student once confided in her that they wanted to use the pronouns "they/them," and then that student proceeded to say, "But please don't tell my parents." And I saw that nod, and I appreciate that nod, that's a real, that's a real thing that happens in our schools, believe it or not. And absent 57, 56, well, let's just entertain the world present 57, 56 for a moment, right? Present 57, 56, that teacher had the ability to say, "Are you safe? Are you cared for?" Operating under every possible sort of safety checks that as educators were licensed to conduct, to support that student through this sort of moment. Absent 57, 56, it's sort of at the discretion of the teacher, how to handle it? You can shake your head no, Jerry, but it is. And here's, here's the fact, and here's where I want to draw with this, and this is going to, and I got to start with, there is no disrespect to the school my child goes to. But absent how a, how a grade level communicates to a family, kindergarten, my kindergarten experience is vastly different than my first grade experience, because at James and Row, the kindergarten teachers communicate with families different than the first grade families. Now, we extrapolate that to the conversation about a student's gender identity, and I stress gender identity, because gender identity is different than sexual identity. Sexual identity is the fact that I was born with a penis and I've got XY chromosomes, gender identity is that I identify as a male, but it's okay if I identify as a female, or I identify as nothing, and that's okay, but the absent policy that supports how to navigate that, every single teacher in this district tomorrow morning is going to wake up wondering, "How do I handle it?" And this district is ill-prepared to answer that question. This is not a discrimination conversation, this is how to support students having that. This is not discrimination, this is not about discrimination, this is about how to support a student who has this conversation with themselves, who needs support through it, and how do we support it? And the last thing that I would want as a school leader or as a district leader, is hundreds of adults doing a hundred different things. Because I can tell you right now, I would sue the pants off this district the minute my son got different experiences related to that. So just something to consider for those of you who are, you know, becoming bobbleheads in this moment, you are board members who represent the district, who create policy, yes, we've heard that loud and clear, what you've done is you've removed policy, and absent the creation of policy, there's nothing. And I would agree that that in and of itself opens you to litigation, but more importantly is that tomorrow morning, I'm almost at midnight, but I know I'm at my time anyways, is that I got, I got teachers that I love and care about, I got staff that I love and care about, who are going to wake up tomorrow morning not knowing how to handle this. Because you're correct, it is guidance.
Brett, sorry.
And I'm sorry too, that tomorrow, I'm sorry that tomorrow-
Is it running?
Educators don't have this guidance, because you've removed this guidance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've got 18 minutes, the whole meeting. 18 minutes, I gave you every minute, right? So I said, I try to enforce the rule this time, because we have a lot of people, and it's getting to midnight, so, you dig at your three minutes, so, yes, go ahead.
Hi, everyone, I'm Cal, still, North Brunswick still. Really, thank you all for illuminating the politics behind the situation, it's kind of weird, but it's also kind of nice to know that it's like, oh, it's, we're trying to make politics moves here, we don't actually, like, necessarily hate trans people, we just don't care enough, like, that's kind of, you know, that's nice to know. There's a lot of interesting misinformation that's happened, that's been commented on. I love hearing commentary that I'm not a real man, it's pretty cool. I did want to mention that I am happier as a fake man than I ever was as a real woman. And then I just wanted to touch on, everyone's really concerned about cisgender children being mutilated and having, like, permanent damage done to their bodies, but no one seems to care that transgender kids are getting regularly forced into natal puberty, having to do things like, you know, having their bodies grow in ways that they don't want, and they have to surgically correct later. I did not want, like, I don't know why, you know, I'm sure there are men out there who have breasts and they're fine with it, but like, as a man, I did not want to have breasts, right? And so getting the surgery to correct that would not have been necessary if we had known about transgender people when I was in high school, and if we had supported them, and we had puberty blockers as an option. So if we really think that kids aren't mature enough to decide, and it's not just, oh, we don't think trans people are real, then puberty blockers are actually the solution that we should default to, until we think they are actually ready to decide. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? See none?
Motion, motion to close public comments.
Have a second?
I second.
Who are in favor?
Hi.
Okay, board member comments. Any board member in a final thoughts?
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Even though no one commented on Mrs. White's comment about looking at an alternative policy, or alternative plans, we did discuss that back in closed session, and I agree with Mrs. White. One of the things I did say was that we need to look at something to, again, a policy that helps the staff, helps the students, so I just wanted to mention Mrs. White, that, you know, she has a point, so we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members? Any other board members?
Nope.
Nope. See none? Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
That's my, that's my position.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you, see you guys next Tuesday.